I want to call the Hopkinton Town Council meeting of May 6, 2013 to order with a moment of silent meditation and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda is, I need a motion to sit as licensing board.
So moved.
Okay. Open a hearing on the application. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Open a hearing on the application for a special event permit filed by Raymond Quinlan of Fort Frontier Road Properties LLC, 15 Gray Lane, Ashway, for property identified as Pavilion Steakhouse and Banquets located at 15A Gray Lane, Ashway, to cover various events scheduled during the weekends from May 2013 through October 2013, which include car shows and catered events. Lisa, have all the applications and filing fees been received and notices posted?
Yes.
Okay. Application, I'm sorry, Representative President, Mr. Camoli?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
I'll hand it over to the podium to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Attorney George Camoli, I have the pleasure of representing Frontier Road Properties LLC, whose sole member is Raymond Quinlan. We're before you for a special events application for property located at 15A Frontier Road. It's the place of the Pavilion Steakhouse and Banquet facility. The application has been filed to include all the events for the season, as it's done in other towns in Aragansett and Westley in particular, so that we don't have to return each time there is an event. Copies of the application have also been sent to the Ashway Fire Marshal, the Ashway Fire Chief, and the Hopkinton Police Department, because at any and all times, we understand and acknowledge that the applicant can be required to have a constable or a police officer there. We've supplied you with the application showing the parking plan. We proposed an events tent, which is shown on the site as well, and we believe the application is in order. I have one and only one witness, which is Mr. Ogilvy, and I'd ask you be sworn in.
Okay. Lisa, would you do the honors, please?
Do you sound as though the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you out?
I do.
Michael, your current occupation?
The managing director for Pavilion Steakhouse and Banquets.
And what particular expertise do you have in the management of such a facility?
I've spent the last twenty-odd years in the restaurant business, particularly in Westley and South County Rhode Island. I've handled banquet facilities, as well as catering companies and restaurants.
Now, we're looking at the application. You prepared the Exhibit A, which is attached to the application?
That's true, I did.
Could you please explain to the town council, how does the car show operate?
Car show operates by, we place all the cars up on the driving range of the edge of the property to allow people to walk around the cars and see that in a comfortable atmosphere. It gives a better flow for the parking lot, because it's removed 100 cars from the parking lot, put them up onto the driving range, gives it a better, more of a, kind of a nice show-type atmosphere to it. And out there, we do provide, we do provide a food and beverage service as well.
Now, looking at the catered events, could you please explain what the catered events were and how you would handle those?
The catered events are all located within the function tent, the 40-by-60 tent, which we're placing on, which is placed on the property. It's, we're doing bridal showers, a fund day for the Ashway Elementary School, another fundraiser for the State Street School, do some fundraisers, some testimonials, the Ashway Fire Department's having their annual dinner there. So basically, it's an extension of the restaurant by having just a nice facility that we can actually operate restaurants, and we can operate food and beverage service out for private events.
Now, Sunday events, could you please, please explain those to the town council?
Sunday events are lobster dinner steak fries, which are open to the public, and again, in New England, especially now with Miss Quamicket kind of getting back on its feet, where do you go for a Sunday lobster dinner? So we've provided this as a additional family, a nice family event where they can have a lobster dinner, steak fry, and then play the mini golf, ice cream, and spend the afternoon.
Now, when you have these special events, you acknowledge you bring in a Portageon facility?
Yes, we do.
And that's just not a normal Portageon facility, is it?
No, it's a custom elite trailer. It's a fully functional, handicap-accessible, with running water, lights, fans, it's a nice, it's a nice bathroom.
Now, how many additional employees will you be required if you were granted this license?
Over the course of summer, about fifteen to twenty additional employees.
And you're well aware that if the chief of police requires you to have additional police protection, you'll have that?
Yes, we will.
I have no further questions, Mr. Ogilvy. We welcome any, to any council member.
Okay, yeah, who wants to start? David, any questions?
You're asking for a one-time licensing fee, is that correct, for all events?
Yes, similar to what they've done in other communities, rather than return for each and every week, because the council doesn't meet on a weekly basis, we go for the season. It's done in, most importantly, it's done in Westley, and it's also done in Aragansett.
I think these are wonderful ideas. I like, I like car shows, I like old cars, and I think it's just, it's just a well-thought-out idea. I'm a little concerned, however, if another organization has two events in one summer, for example, that we charge a licensing fee for each one of those events for the other organization. And I, you know, I defer to the rest of the council on this, but, not that I want to see you get nailed every time for a licensing fee, but I just, I just want to, I don't, I don't want to set a precedent here where somebody else comes in and says, hey, we're going to have an event in June, we're going to have an event in August, and you're charging us $100 for the one in June, and the $100 for the one in August, where you're already charging, you, for example, $100 for the whole season, why can't we have the same thing? So I'm, I'm a little concerned by that. Otherwise, I think it's, I think it's a wonderful idea, I think it brings people into the town, I think it's great for your business, and I think you've got a great operation going on there, so, otherwise, okay with me.
Okay, Barbara, who wants to?
I think it's, I think Dave has brought up an interesting point, I hadn't thought about it that way. And I don't know whether that would be something we should address, because I wouldn't want it as a precedent, but it may be more like $100 for the month of June, $100 for the month of July, $100 for the month of August, like to do one fee, I mean, as a possibility, just so people don't get used to, because we do charge people individually fees, and it might be something we should address. I hadn't thought about that, it didn't occur to me. I know that the Pavilion has done wonderfully with you, Mr. Ogilvy. It's just a wonderful place to be, it's clean, it has wonderful people, it moves very smoothly. I love seeing the car shows, people adore them, the people there are so nice. So, I mean, you really have a lovely kind of people coming to the Pavilion, and I'm really pleased. I actually have two things I'd like to bring up, on the, on your information, the public liability insurance performance bond, as standard is a million, but the town of Hopkinton named additional insured, usually we should be named the additional insured, is my understanding as a business speak. Usually our name is on it as well. I know that when I do houses, I have to put my contractor on as an additional insured, it doesn't cost anything, but I, I think that's a common thing, common business practice, and I certainly like to see that on for us. And then the other question I had, generically, is just, I know one of the things you've done, which has been a real benefit, is keeping the lights off, because they finish the, hitting the balls at dusk. I know that, I looked at your list, and a lot of the events are just during the afternoon, but the ones that are in the evening, do you, are you still planning on keeping the regulation, which I think is to turn the lights off by 11:00? But I don't know if you're planning on turning them off even earlier, if necessary?
I have no intention of turning the driving lane range lights on for the entire season. We don't feel that's necessary, or have good business sense to have those lights on at night.
Oh, that's great.
The function tent lights and everything like that will be on, but they're 15-watt LED lights.
Exactly, so you're not planning on lighting up the entire?
No, we're not.
I think that's fabulous, I'm sure the neighbors will be more than pleased. Those are the only two things that I had. But I thought Dave brought up an interesting point, I don't know how to handle it, we've never done it before.
Scott?
I think that we need to work with our local businesses, from Meeting House Bridge to Hopkinton City, there's really like four restaurants, Lucky House, Rick Goven, Main Street Pizza, and the Pavilion, not counting Dunkin' Donuts, where you can, you really can't get a meal meal. I think it's important to work with business, and it's not really practical, a practical situation is that a business which weekly would try to generate business through these types of things, really should not be hamstrung by the coming in for a license all the time. I think that Councilman husband brings up some good points that we can certainly work on. And the only other question, and I take Councilman Powell for the question about insurance, should the town of Hopkinton be on that too, as you mentioned?
I'm really concerned, that's all I'm.
I'm sorry.
Some liability insurance, should we be listed as?
No. No, I was just actually discussing.
Oh, okay, is that, yeah, the other applicant?
It's not our part.
Okay.
Okay. I look forward to helping that business, and from what I understand, we've never had any problems with this business in the town, and I, unless there's something that's really serious, I look forward to granting it.
Okay. Is the liability insurance attached? I think it said it's attached, but it's not there.
The liability insurance is attached to the BV license plate, we'd be glad to supplement the application.
Okay, yeah, I just didn't see, it said it was attached, but, okay. As long as it's, obviously, good.
We have insurance.
Yeah. But, yeah, I guess, I didn't think about the other, you know, the fees and stuff, you know, as far as the grant. I think your timeframe you guys are thinking of was six months, right? 180 days roughly?
It can't, the time can't be up to more than 180 days, it has to be removed as we take it down. As far as the husband's questions, I don't believe the ordinance was intended to be a revenue generating fee, I believe it was to be a compliance fee, to assure that we come before you with good faith, assure that we have sanitary facilities, assure that we're promoting the local, promoting most of these events for charity, through their school districts and fire departments. I believe our intent was to comply with the ordinance, and we're hoping you're agreeing that other municipalities handed it by a season, and they actually allow them to amend the application, provided they come back before the licensing went.
Okay, that makes sense to me.
But I think time is of the essence, because it's May, and they're, probably their best season is June to September, I would imagine, business-wise, during the summer, not that you don't get business, other possibilities.
Dave?
I don't know how we, how we set this up, but I certainly don't want to be restrictive with the licensing fee, I really, really don't want to be restrictive, I think it's a well-run operation up there, I think it's a great asset for the town. Like I say, I do worry, though, I say Gordon Green comes in, and Gordon Green holds two events a year, or three events a year, and we charge them $100 a event, they've got a perfect right to come back and say, well, you only charged them $100 for the whole season, why don't you give us the same deal? So maybe we should have a seasoned, Memorial Day to Labor Day fee, if you want, or a one-time, one-event kind of fee. But I just, I see a problem with that, and I don't, I don't, I don't want to, I really don't want to charge you $100 a event, I really don't. But at the same time, I don't want to, I want somebody coming back at us and saying, hey, listen, we want the same deal.
Well, we could review it on a case-by-case basis, too, you know, so that, so that precedent doesn't get set, you know, if you're worried about that. But, you know, your point's well taken, you know, certainly we'll discuss it, I guess, and make our decisions, but Barbara?
I have, I have the same concern, because like a Gordon Green post could come up and say, I'm doing two fish fries a month, or three fish fries, or whatever they want to do, and we would have this as a precedent of charging only one fee, and there are other organizations we have to keep much closer control on than, than the Pavilion. I, and I do think this is the first time this has occurred, this is the first time it's come in front of the board in such a way. I would suggest, you know, that this should be, we should bring this up as a council and come to some conclusion, but I also agree that this is time-sensitive. I would like to propose that we charge that $100 fee, one $100 for June, one $100 for July, one $100 for August. I don't know how many more events you'll have as the thing, because I think the summer's the most important time, it's just a generic, and cover it for the month, and then address it, you know, more thoroughly, because that could become, as we grow, a problem.
Just to that point, I don't think it's going to, you're going to get a lot of organizations doing things on a consistent basis, to the extent of maybe six months, you know, I just, I can't see that.
Right.
So I don't see the precedent there, and as the representative's attorney has mentioned, it's not a revenue thing for us, really.
Right.
You know, he's a good partner, a good taxpayer, good business, everyone loves going up there, including myself and the rest of us. So, anyway, that's my two cents. Yes, Lisa?
It seems to me the ordinance also addresses the $100 filing fee as the expense to cover the advertising and the mailing to the butters. It doesn't, it's vague, it doesn't specify, but it seems to me it's more administrative than anything else.
Do we have to advertise every time they have an event up there? For every one of these events that they've listed?
What I, what the ad stated was, it was for a season, it just stated it was events and.
So it might be only a one-time advertising situation?
Advertising, right.
Okay. Okay.
Well, Lisa, you're fine, it was okay, you advertised what was on the ad. Yeah.
No. Okay.
Well, then, if it's, if it's specifically for advertising and to let the butters know, and if you can do that within, with one mailing, not with 20, that would be valid.
Right.
Because then someone couldn't come in with an event, come in six months later with another event, it would be a different mailing. And in this case, you're mailing one time.
That's right.
For the season.
And that's something that we've learned a lesson about doing seasonal type of licensing. We do it at Christmas time anyways, holiday things, which is, so there's no reason why we couldn't do it the summer season.
That would be acceptable.
Does anyone out in the public wish to be heard on this matter? Do I have a motion, folks?
Um, yes. Make a motion? Hmm. I'll make a motion to allow an application, allow the application for the special event permit filed by Raymond Quinlan for Frontier Road Properties, the Pavilion Steakhouse and Banquets for the, for the weekends, May 2013 through October 2013.
Second?
The only, I'll second the discussion. The only question I have is, are you going to, you didn't mention the fees, is it going to be $100 a month or not?
No, no, it's going to be exactly as we have laid it out before, it's the one $100 fee, because it's a, they're sending out information.
To the butters.
You know, I support that, I second that.
All right. Any further discussion? You shaking your head, David, what's up?
I'm concerned, I'm just, I'm just concerned that, and I like every organization in this town, and Pavilion being one of them, absolutely, I'm just concerned that somebody's going to want to have an event in May, and then they're going to want to have an event in October, and they're going to come in with, with the event in May, and we're going to say, okay, $100, and then they're going to come back and see us in October saying, and not have you put it on any kind of agenda, and say, hey, we're going to have this event in October, we're going to have a, I don't know, a motorcycle regular run or something like that, and we're going to charge them another $100, and they're going to say, well, how is this fair?
Yeah, that's a good point, I mean, if it's two separate events, then they should be charged.
Right, we're going to advertise it twice.
They advertise it twice.
So, so if that organization came in, in May, and said, we're going to have this event in May, we're going to have another one just like this in October?
Then we would review that as well.
Then we, then we don't need charging them $100.
Correct, correct.
But we probably should probably look at the ordinance dealing with seasonal things, you know, the summer season, whatever, but that's something the council can do. And I wish the Pavilion good luck.
It is, we have to address it.
At some point.
Right.
Yep. Okay, we need a vote here. Got a motion, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Enjoy.
Thank you.
Great day, thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is open a hearing on the application for special event permit filed by Scott James, commander, for the American Legion Gordon Green Post, number 27, 34th Thaumud Drive, Hope Valley, for a motorcycle run and chicken barbecue fundraising event to benefit Reina Serene Fleming, scheduled for Sunday, June 9, 2013, 12:00 to 8:00 PM at the American Legion Gordon Post, Gordon Green Post, number 27. Okay. Applicant here, okay, great. Lisa, have all the filing fees and notices been posted?
The notice has been posted, the application requests a waiver of the filing fee, because they are a nonprofit, and they're looking to raise money for this event.
Okay, all right, great. I guess, oh, yeah, please state your name.
Michael Napolitano.
Okay, Mike.
Napolitano? Napolitano?
Yes.
Please.
Okay, you want to explain what's going to happen there, I guess?
Uh, yes, we're doing a charity bike run on June 9, and it's to benefit, there's actually a website that you can go to, I bought, bought something, but it's ronajourney.com, and you can read about her, she's a local girl from Charleston. She had, December of this past, 2012, she was diagnosed with a debilitating illness, and this is to help her family with the medical expenses. So all the proceeds that we get are going to go to the family.
Okay, starting with the council, I guess, start over here, Scott, any questions, you know, for the applicant?
There seems to be so many fundraisers for a lot of people who have health issues, and I wish you well, I do support this, and I wish your family well, in the American Legion for doing that, and it's a positive thing in the community, so, I look forward to granting it.
Thank you.
Barbara?
I also think this is just really wonderful of you to do this for the, for the child and her family, I think the American Legion, this is really what the Gordon Green Post should do and has been, and I think it's fabulous, I'm really glad you're doing it, and wish you all the best. Is there takeout?
Thank you. I don't believe so, we're having a catered, it's going to be catered, so we have somebody coming in that's going to do the barbecue dinner for, for the people.
Darn. I don't ride a motorcycle, and I can't get any chicken.
Well, you can come down and get chicken, I'm sure.
I can pay for chicken.
Yes. I don't, I don't ride, but I'm going to pay to get the chicken.
Exactly, thank you.
David?
I agree, I think it's a wonderful idea, I think it's, it's nice that the, that the post does it, does this kind of things for people, great idea. On off note, Michael, let me ask you something, though, you just hit my conversation with the Pavilion regarding licensing fees and stuff like that, and I'm fully, I'm, I'm supportive of waiving the $100 fee for you, for the, for the post, for this event. Do you foresee a problem with this, with this situation, with the licensing fee, if the post decides they're going to have another benefit, just for example, in August, and then, and then, you know, we have, we have to waive the fee again, and stuff like that? Do you foresee a problem down the pike with, with?
Well, his fee's being waived.
Yes, his fee's being waived, but, now, will every fee be waived for the Gordon Green Post?
If it's a nonprofit, I think it's up to us to decide case by case.
Then we have no problem, if you, if you weren't going to waive the fee, then we'd probably have a problem, no, that's, that's fine.
Oh, okay, so Lisa can clarify, she does have a bill for the advertising.
I have a bill out for the advertising, because again, that was advertising, there was one out to the butters. And to further, on your, your topic, seems to me in, during the regular relicensing for their class D beverage license, there have been instances where they provide the full events for the seasons.
Yeah, okay, and then we charge them, we charge them?
No, that's part of their, their renewal for their class D license, if they want to have a planned event season, they will provide it right through December.
Yeah, I just don't want you getting the short end of the stick on this one. Okay, no, fine, great, great idea.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I read about her situation, it was really, she's a, what, 12, 13?
12.
My son's age. Had practice doing something with gymnastics, and then all of a sudden couldn't move and paralyzed, and just, really sad. I hope you raised a lot of money, because it's going to take a lot of money, but I support certainly of the waiver and, and the event, and, yeah, I just hope she can get well, but.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for the special event permit for the American Legion Gordon Green Post to hold the motorcycle run and chicken barbecue fundraising event to benefit Rona Serene Fleming.
With?
With the waiver of the $100 fee.
Second.
Okay. Anyone out in the public wishing to be heard on this particular matter? Okay, any further council discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, have a nice day.
You too, thank you. A motion to adjourn this licensing board and reconvene this council?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next on the agenda is the consent agenda, do we have a motion on that?
Yeah, I, I just noticed a very minor mistake that I corrected with the Town Record on page eight, April 1st, it's.
Oh, wait, we're not here yet, you're just pulling it? Are you pulling it or not pulling it?
I don't think I need to pull that.
Okay, so you're pulling it, excuse me, Scott?
I can give you the correction, on April 1st, page eight, last sentence, we're substituting "or" to "for", F.O.R., F.O.R.
Yeah, it's because it's the meaning of F.
Unless there's a decrease in student enrollment or non-referees, but expenses, and I have to be pulled.
With, with that correction, for the April 1st, 2013 meeting, I need the consent agenda to be adopted as presented.
Second. Okay. I was not here on the 15th, so I don't know how that plays out, I guess I abstained from the April 15 notes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next is the first public forum, anyone out there wishing to speak? Having heard none, next is Mr. McGary, Town Manager's report.
Well, thank you. Just three matters, on April 25, I met with DPW Director Tim Teft and Sean Martin, our Fussin' O'Neill engineer, and we discussed the status of the South Drive Drainage Project. This is an ongoing project that we're involved with. The design work has now been fully completed, and the DEM groundwater discharge permit application has been filed with DEM. Fussin' O'Neill is, will soon begin drafting an RFP for construction work, which will go out the bid and then be advertised with a bid awarded by the council at a later date. And this is the project that's funded through that $100,000 hazardous mitigation grant through FEMA. And hopefully, we'll be able to complete this project late October of this year. Secondly, April 25, we conducted the second meeting of the town's job description committee, and the purpose of the meeting was to review the status of the recently drafted job descriptions that were assigned to committee members, and also to set a timetable to address those not yet completed. We began the process with 12 job descriptions, we added an additional dozen, with another 13 left to go. And basically, the goal is to create job descriptions for all full-time and permanent part-time employees, and special thanks to the committee members for working on the project. And lastly, April 30, I met with Planner Jim Lambfair, DPW Director Tim Teft, Matt Damaris, Rhode Island DEM Deputy Chief Sue Cannon, three other DEM reps, and Jim Roden of Fussin' O'Neill, regarding the town's development of its stormwater management plan. We discussed the plan's development and timetable for completing the plan, and DEM and Fussin' O'Neill, I think that should be completed by the end of the calendar year.
Okay. Okay. Any questions for Bill, folks? Okay. Thank you, Bill. Next on the agenda, under new business, is the land trust request for council support for the Rhode Island Community Preservation Act amendments for SOA legislation identified as SB 696 and HB 5633. Marilyn, how are you?
I'm fine, thank you. Marilyn Grant, Chair of the Hopkinton Land Trust. I want to start by thanking you for taking the time to consider our request to support this legislation, and for putting us on the agenda. Hopkinton in particular was asked to consider this support of only three, I think, two or three towns, because of our past discussions about, you know, searching for an ongoing sustainable way of supporting the land trust. So we have with us tonight Rupert Friday, the Director of the Rhode Island Land Trust Council, and he will tell us more about the thinking behind this legislation and what it entails, and then I, we also have a prepared-for-you resolution that we hope you will consider.
Okay, thanks, Marilyn.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Rupert?
Thanks, Marilyn. Rupert Friday, I'm Director for the Rhode Island Land Trust Council, which is a coalition of land trusts in the state, and we have about 45 land trusts in Rhode Island, so most of them are all volunteer groups like Hopkinton, 18 municipal land trusts. This, the.
I'm sorry, 45, 45 land trusts over Rhode Island?
18 are municipal, affiliated with town council.
And some are private?
The others are all nonprofit organizations, yeah. So this legislation originated from two places. The first is a number of towns that were interested in getting a transfer fee like Block Island and Little Compton have for funding land conservation or other purposes. And over the years, Jamestown, Cumberland, Hopkinton, I know Westerly have tried to get a transfer tax like Little Compton and Block Island have. And the Realtors have opposed this. So the Land Trust Council has been looking for other strategies for funding land conservation. And the other origin of this, working on this legislation, the Land Trust Council really has led the initiative to get state open space bonds on the ballot, 2004, 2008, and 2012. 2008, 2012, the leadership in the General Assembly and the Governor's Office has been saying to us, we really need a way to fund land conservation that's not totally dependent on bond funding. So we started researching what other states were doing. And we found in Massachusetts the Community Preservation Act. And it was adopted in 2000. And we have essentially taken their idea and applied it and sort of transferred it to Rhode Island code and Rhode Island structure. What the, so in Massachusetts, it was adopted in, well, I'll lay out the, so the Community Preservation Act, it does two things. The first thing it does, it's an enabling legislation that authorizes a town that put before, a referendum before the citizens for a vote, for a surcharge on property tax, which would go into a dedicated fund for land conservation, it's capital, for land conservation, parks development, and historic preservation. The Massachusetts model includes affordable housing in their, in their model. And when we originally started on this with the state coalition, the affordable housing folks were working with us. When we did some projections of the funds that would be generated and the amount of money that has been used for affordable housing by state bonds, the numbers just, it just blows the budget away. So the affordable housing folks said, we think you should proceed, go ahead, try and do this with the historic preservation folks. So that's the way it's been, we're moving forward. And the House sponsor also thought it would be better to move forward without the affordable housing in it. So the original legislation modeled after Massachusetts included was sort of three things: affordable housing, land conservation, and historic preservation. And we have a Sub-A draft that takes out the affordable housing component. So the second part of the legislation is a surcharge on document recording fees. We followed Massachusetts model. Again, we used $20 originally. The House sponsor thought that we should use $10. So the Sub-A changes it to $10. That creates a state fund, which is used then to match the towns that have adopted, the towns that vote to adopt the Community Preservation Act. It provides a match for the funds generated by the town. So it's a state match for the town-generated revenue. The way the funds are used is strictly determined by the town. You create a committee that determines, makes recommendations to the council, actually, and the council makes the decisions. But the decisions are based on the recommendations from the committee. It is written that it has 10% required to go for historic preservation and 10% for land conservation. But that can be carried over numerous years. So if you wanted it all to go into historic preservation, the 10% allocated to land conservation can be carried a number of years until you have enough for a project. So that's, that's the essence of the Community Preservation Act. And what it does, as you're familiar with your land trusts, once you have some funds, you're able to leverage that with foundations that provide capital for land conservation, historic preservation. So if you have some of this, and not only you can leverage estate grants, but you also can leverage private grants, foundations, Champlin Foundation, some of the other foundations that provide capital for those purposes. I'd be glad to answer questions.
Yes. Thanks, Mr. Friday. David, do you want to start off?
So you're saying would be a $10 fee, you want to call it, you use that word, fee for a transaction, is that right?
It's on, it's on documents that are recorded by the town clerk. And it's not all, the Sub-A changed it so it's not all documents. Some of the documents have a really low recording, it's $7 charge. And the House sponsor wanted it to apply just to recording fees that were, I think, $60 and more.
And that money wouldn't go back to the actual towns, it would go to the general fund?
That goes into, it goes into a dedicated fund at the state that then is matched back to the towns that adopted it. Yeah. So I started to tell you, Massachusetts, they adopted this enabling legislation in 2000. To date, 150 towns in Massachusetts have voted to do this program. And it's written so that the town can vote to undo it. It's also written that you determine the level of surcharge you want for your property taxes. So it really gives you a lot of flexibility. There's a cap, up to 3%, but within. In Massachusetts, the person working on me with this legislation, the state coalition, is Val Toman. She runs Preserve Rhode Island. And Val worked in Massachusetts when they adopted the legislation and implemented it. So some of her stories, she said there's, one of the towns that adopted it is not a very wealthy town, and they adopted a surcharge at a quarter percent. So that it, a little bit trickled in. And then over three years, they had the funds to do capital renovation to their historic town hall. So that's the kind of thing.
So one town could charge 2%, another town could charge 10%. Is that, is that shown on the books at the state level so that the town that charges a quarter percent can't, can't, can't all of a sudden say, geez, we need a lot of money, we're going to take from that?
Right. No, the state matches, is matched the amount that the town generates or proportion amounts. Yeah. So in, in the first couple of years, when there's only a few towns adopting it, the state match ends up being 100% because there's more revenue there than, than towns pulling on it. When there's a lot of towns, like in Massachusetts, now there's 150 towns pulling on it. The state match isn't 100%. I think last year it was maybe 26%, but it's proportional to the amount of revenue generated in the towns.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, Barbara?
I actually have a lot of questions. I am very much for the land trust getting money aside for them to renovate the properties they buy. I am 100% behind you on that. I am not sure that this is the right way to go. I have any number of questions on it.
Yep.
One is the 3% surcharge on our property tax. We already have very high property tax. It is really, and even if it's a quarter percent, our property tax is so high already, people would be very distraught. I took a look at the $10 charges on the documents. That's an enormous amount of work for the town. That money goes to the state. I'm assuming the 3% or whatever it is stays with the town.
Yes, in dedicated fund, yep.
But the $10 per document goes to the state. I don't know, I mean, in the past, certainly with Hopkinton compared to Barrington, Narragansett, I don't think we've received matching funds equivalent to the amount of work that we have for our blue ways, for our rivers, compared to the beaches and the salt ponds. I don't necessarily think that they would get back what I feel that we would deserve. I have a real problem with starting a whole new set of employees and business setup for, at the state level.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's not really. It's handled by an existing group at the state level.
It's handled within the revenue department, but the revenue department is going to have to add personnel. I don't really like doing that. I'm not fond of the conservation, Community Preservation Committee with five to nine members. We have enough problems trying to get five, let alone nine. And I have perfect confidence in my land trust by itself to make those decisions. I don't need people from all over to make decisions for them. I actually have confidence in them. They certainly have conservation involved and historic involved, and they have always been open to all of it. So I am not interested really in starting a whole new commission in town as well, Preservation Commission. You make recommendations to the town council, and the recommendations include anticipated costs, and then we make the decision on whether it happens or not. I am happier with the land trust making a decision on what you want to spend your money on. And you, as a committee, makes it. And I don't think you have to come back to us to say, well, is this okay? I think they can, they function at this point rather independently. And actually, I'm fond of their independence. I'm assuming that if you get this property, and then you want to dispose of the real property, like the CPF buys the property, the Community Preservation Fund buys the property, and then they sell it, that money goes back into?
It would go back into the fund, right?
Right. But when they sell that property, it has a permanent easement.
It would have a conservation easement. You could do it that way, yeah.
So when you sell the property, you're selling it with codicils. So it's not a true selling of the property without the codicil. Like, if you really wanted to get rid of a piece and you wanted it to be manufacturing or it needed to be something serious.
Right.
We really couldn't do that.
But I would think you would select the properties you're protecting upfront carefully.
I'm sure they would. It's one of those where I actually trust the land trust overall.
Yep.
Then I would trust the council, to be frank. I think that the criteria, the state grant programs may include, if you do a state grant program under this, if this is established, my understanding from reading this, is that if we want the grants and we apply for them, the grant may have in it that even if we don't, even if we have not adopted this 45-24-412, we would have to. So it's like a back end.
No, it's not written that way at all. It's written so that, so right now, there's grants, the state open space grants, and they have, they have scoring criteria for projects. So it's saying that DEM could change their scoring criteria.
Yes, they could.
That say, if you have this program, you get an extra point.
Right. The state grant programs may include local adoption of this section among the criteria for the selection of grant recipients, which means if we don't have it, we wouldn't get the grant. I also don't like the fact that they can change as they choose.
Well, they can change their criteria now.
They can change their criteria, I know. But at this point, we don't have to deal with it. I mean, they can change their criteria, but our land trust can do what they want. I mean, because they're not part of this organization.
But the land trust still has to meet the state criteria to get the state grant at this point, yeah.
Oh, sure, sure. But if part of that criteria was, now you have to do this particular thing, I would rather.
It wouldn't be a yes/no criteria. It might be a point in scoring, is the way it's written.
Right, but that point may count. And, you know, we would really like to not have to get it from the back end. I think it's new work for new people. The fund at the state level consists of all revenues that are both public and private as gifts and grants. So that if we had someone in town who wanted to give a gift, now I assume they can give the gift to the land trust.
Yeah, absolutely.
They don't have to give it to the state.
Absolutely.
And the state wouldn't say, well, that's a private source and we should have access?
Absolutely.
That's good. And the general recording fees, these new fees are basically for us a new tax structure.
They're not new fees.
No, they're not. But the $10.
It's a $10 surcharge, right?
Is a new fee. It's a tax. It's just an undercover tax.
Yep.
Which I prefer not to do. It's a new tax structure for us effectively or for our citizens in the town. And there's, you know, quite a number of them. There's a huge list here. So, and this money, and not just the general recording fees, but the 10% of the recording fees provided need to be for the purposes of document preservation and technological upgrades. That's nice.
That already exists.
Yeah, but that's nice. That's good. I mean, I think that part seems to make some sense. I think that it is, effectively, it's a tax I don't want. It has a new organization and tax, well, it has a tax structure I'm not fond of. I don't think our citizens can afford that, nor do I want them to. And I also would, I also do not want to start a whole new commission. I don't think it's necessary in a small town. We have enough problems trying to fill all of the boards and commissions in the first place. And then to take a volunteer, they're not paid, and put them on a secondary commission reasonably. I mean, I understand, and the, and the ideas of what you want to do is great. I just don't think we have the manpower. But I would pretty much like to leave most of my monies and the decision on what the land trust does with the land trust. I would like to find a way to give them money. I absolutely think that's important. I just don't think this is the right way.
Yeah. No, I understand. I just want to make one clarification. So it's enabling legislation. So you would have to put it before the voters and they would have to vote to do this.
Right. And I would like everybody who wants to do extra taxes not to vote for all those people in foreclosure and the ones I have that are really poor and can't afford the taxes.
So, and you also can write it so that you don't have tax on the first $100,000, that sort of thing. You can write it that way.
Right. I knew there was, but it becomes just another tax surcharge. I would rather give them a percentage of the monies we already collect. Because I am very interested in finding a way to do it.
That's, yeah. I just, you know, presenting it as an option, we're looking at other, what other states have done.
No, I'm really glad you are. But it's also, because there's 45 and there's only 18 municipals, so the money that goes to the state, that money could only come back to the municipal land trust, not to the private land trust.
But any, it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to, the town does not have to have a municipal land trust to do this.
Right. But if the towns do, then it shouldn't go to the private land trust.
It would not, yeah. It goes to the town.
And we would have to keep track of all that, too. Because I want to make sure if they put money, it's for them. I want the money to come back.
Yep.
All of it, to come back to my own land trust.
I just want to point out one quick thing before I get to Scott. But, you know, aside from being enabling legislation, which obviously has to be put before the voters, that's something that taxpayers can decide. But I think it's only, before us tonight, it's just a resolution. And I, correct me if I'm wrong, if we sponsor this, it still has to pass the legislature.
It does.
And then come back, then we actually can, we have to vote on it.
That would authorize you to put a referendum before the citizens.
Correct. And then before the voters, then ultimately make some tweaks as we see fit. You know, like the percentage, you know, and a few other things that we'd like to tweak perhaps, but, you know.
We can't tweak the $10.
And actually, listening, listening to your suggestion, maybe the enabling legislation should authorize you to designate an existing committee as your Community Preservation Committee?
Something like that.
Sounds like a good, good addition.
Right. So before us, like I said, it's just the sponsoring of the resolution. Scott?
Thank you. First of all, I should state, I am the liaison for the land trust in town. And there's five members of the land trust here, and there's a member of the Conservation Commission here. So sometimes it's tough to get people out, so I recognize their attendance. I find some of the comments, I would like to support some, and I think there are legitimate concerns that people brought up today. But obviously, Realtors have a financial interest. But I, I find it interesting about the property tax concern. I don't have a problem with the property taxes not being used to fund this. But the conventional thinking was that if you don't put houses on property, it doesn't increase school costs. So it would seem that if you encourage good land use and land conservation, that's one less, and it's a terrible thing to say, one less child going to the school and the property, the cost of education doesn't even up with the property taxes paid. So I think the property tax issue is really not a strong one, although it might be relevant, but it's not because, also, I do think that we do have an independent land trust. And I do think that we should give them a boost. They have been trying to come up with a way to run their operations and be independent of the town. And I think the town of Hopkinton in particular, and all of western Rhode Island, being less developed than the rest of Rhode Island, this is the place for the green of Rhode Island in the future, that we can avoid some of the mistakes that have been made in other parts of Rhode Island. So let's see my other cheat notes here. There were certainly tax benefits from undeveloped land as far as not producing students in our schools. And obviously, we can't save all the land. And I'm, I'm interested in hoping to find finances for other things. But the tax or money aspect of it would seem to, like I stated earlier, and I don't want to be redundant, that saving land that doesn't produce houses saves money in the long run. And obviously, you can't save all the land in the town. you can't save all the land in the town. But I'd like to see at least some proposal to support this, or some variation of it. And I do thank the work of our land trust members, and the big question is, should we support it, put it before the legislature, in testimony, the bill, bills can always be changed, and if the voters reject it, we could come up with another alternative. But I think the land trust is doing very well. The only question I had is, in the resolution, we didn't, with blank percent on the resolution draft.
I know the answer, it's 67%. Historically, in, let's see, 2004, it was 67%, 2008, it was 67.4%, and 2012, it was 66.9%.
Like I said, I think in spirit, I agree with it. We can certainly exempt property taxes, and I think that the fact that the realtors who are obviously interested in developing land for their financial interest, and the council has an obligation to look out for the interests of the town of Hopkinton, and what this town means to so many people who come here from out of town, who want to enjoy the, the lifestyle of the town of Hopkinton. For the sake of further discussion, I make a motion, this resolution...
He hasn't spoken.
That's okay. I won't interrupt you anyway. I had just had three quick questions and one comment, Mr. Friday. On the state matching funds, is that in a restricted account?
That's the intention, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's number one. Number two I had is, any idea on the revenue, type of revenue, talking about, like those Massachusetts towns?
Yeah.
Have adopted this quite a while now.
We, we...
Just looking for...
Yeah, I have, I have a sheet with some revenue projections, and I can, I can hand copies to you. So, so the top box has the, sort of, the amount of money that the state has been using from bond proceeds for local grants, local open space grants, local recreation grants, and historic preservation. So state bond funding used to locals, and it ends up being about $4.75 million a year since 2004, on, on average. The second box, we estimated the surcharge with a $10, $15, and $20 surcharge on the recording fees, and these are based on, as, as was pointed out, there's an existing $4 surcharge for, for archives, so it's based on revenue generated there. So a $10 surcharge statewide would generate 1.3 million, it's a projection. And then the third box is what the Community Preservation Act has generated in Massachusetts. That's with a $20 surcharge. And the, so the, it's by year, the first column is year, the second column is the number of towns that have adopted it, and the third column is the amount distributed totally statewide in Massachusetts. So it was 100% match until 2008, and, and it's about a 26% match in, in 2012 in Massachusetts.
Is it continuing to go down?
Well, there's more towns have adopted it, and then you also have, it's, it's a recording fee on real estate transactions, so the last couple of years, real estate transactions have been less, so it fluctuates based on the number of real estate transactions in the state, but it also gets distributed more because there's more towns that have adopted it, so it's a lower percentage match now.
But is, it's a lower percentage match, but if the town, through their recording fees, sent just $1,000, they wouldn't get the $1,000 back, they'd get 26% of it?
It's, so it's proportional, so if you look at all the towns and revenue generated, and say, 10 towns generate $10, it would be $10 per town on, from the state.
They do it as a percentage, not as a 100%.
It's a proportion.
You don't, you don't get back 100% of what you're sending them.
You would get back 100% of what you raise in your real estate tax the first year or so.
Yeah, but we already have that, we kept that without giving it to them.
Right, but this, but the state pool would match that.
So the state is matching your real estate percentage?
Yeah, yeah.
Out of the $10 fees?
Right.
If your real estate percentage, if you get a very high real estate percentage, we'll just do an arbitrary $10,000, and your recording fees were $2,000, the state couldn't continually match it, it wouldn't have any...
Right, it wouldn't have enough money.
Right. But it would give you back the $2,000 that you gave it?
It would give you back proportionately what you raise in your real estate fee, that proportion of the state recording fees that's collected during the year.
Yeah, I, I think my concern is, again, they're not getting the recording fees back that they put in. And we need every penny we put in.
In, conceivably, the first year is when there's only a couple of towns that adopted it. If you adopted it, you'd be getting more than you'd be putting in.
Right, but, but that's only under like five years, and after that, you know, life is 100 years after that, so I have a feeling it may go down continuously.
And my third question is, I guess, do you see this as replacing the bond funding?
The, the sponsors in the General Assembly would like some complement, at least some proportion of the bond funding. I don't know that, well, it's, it, so these, these bond funds don't include, for example, the state bond funds for the farm preservation program, or for the state acquisition program, so it wouldn't include those, you know, it wouldn't, if you include those numbers, we aren't coming anywhere near the amount they're spending, so. Massachusetts is actually, with this program, they actually bonded to provide more funds as a match to this program because it's so popular in the towns, so it's an interesting... Yeah, so the bottom box is the different surcharges. This is, this was projected in Portsmouth, and this is with the first $100,000 exempt.
Okay. Fair enough. Then, I guess my, my, my last kind of, or the last comment would be, you know, I would support this resolution, I just would like to maybe tweak it a little bit in terms of the percentage, certainly. And then the only other concern I had was the, you can't get rid of it within five years. I wouldn't, it seems like kind of a long way to go out. I'd probably want to, if we could, tweak it to maybe on an annual basis of renewal or something like that.
So you could vote to repeal it?
Oh, okay.
Is it, well, right now, it's written, so you can vote to repeal it, but it's the same process as adopting it, it's a referendum to the citizens.
But you have to still put it out and vote.
I just, five years, five years is a long time, so in case we get handed a different bill from the school to fight revenue to be able to deal with it, so.
Can I ask him a question?
Yeah.
What is the status of the legislation? Is it out of committee, or what is...
So it's been heard in the Senate committee, and has not been heard in the House Finance Committee. It was scheduled for House Finance Committee, and the sponsor had a meeting when it was scheduled, so it had a conflict, so it couldn't be, so she asked it be rescheduled, and it has not been rescheduled. I think, I know it's not scheduled this week, I know, I think she's hoping to have it scheduled next week or the week after.
Has the leadership of the House taken any decision?
The leadership of the House has not, no.
The, the good thing about this is, this, this resolution recognizes land for recreation, recognizes historic preservation aspect as, as well as environmental, so you're doing more than just saving land, there's a recognition of various elements and components, which I think needs to be stressed for the public. But, and I believe it also, the thing, it's also mentioned, that 10% has to be done for technological upgrades.
That, that's existing, that's existing fee. Yeah, that's an existing fee, that's not in this legislation.
That's already...
Yep.
Already there, we already do that.
Because I'd like to support this, if there's some legitimate tweaking, but the problem is politically, that if it's in the legislature, and it's going over the House side, was there any changes in the Senate bill?
So, so neither side has passed, they're separate bills, and the House sponsor, we, she suggested this sub A language, which would be taking out affordable housing and reducing the, the surcharge from $20 to $10 for recording fee.
Are they identical bills or just different numbers?
Right now, they're identical bills, yeah.
How many co-sponsors do they have?
I would have to look. I have a copy of the Senate, of the House bill, but I don't have... Right now, the, the House has five sponsors. The sponsor in both committees is a member of the Finance Committee, it's the Vice Chair in the Senate, and so a couple of members of the, the Finance Committee are co-sponsors.
Barbara.
I think, you know, I'm, I am not in favor of the resolution. I think we have a surcharge, we have the extra $10, which goes to the state. My land trust is still allowed to do full bonds, and the state does bonds. That's a lot of money people are paying in taxes, for good reason, and I certainly appreciate it, but I would like to find another way to support the land trust and get them money on a consistent basis. I'm, I'm not in favor of the resolution, I think it's much too messy right now, and it's expensive.
One very simple question. Mr. Friday, this is enabling legislation.
It's enabling legislation.
We don't have to get, participate if we don't want to, if this, if these bills pass, one of these two bills or both bills.
Right, it has to be approved by the citizens for you to participate.
On no circumstances is this going to cost this town anything if it decides not to participate, is that correct?
So the document fee would be statewide, the $10 surcharge on the document fees.
So when we get it, it will be, will be...
If, if they pass the legislation, yeah.
Okay. I guess, do we have a motion? At least I can remember.
We also have people from the...
Yes, Dorothy. You want to come to the podium?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Friday.
Thank you very much. Dorothy Gardner, Conange Driftway. Certainly, I'd like, I support the land trust, I think they do a marvelous job, but I feel like I need to whack myself on the side of the head when you say you want to put a tax on a tax. Does this make sense to everyone? I mean, this is absolutely crazy. At Charahoe, they are currently sending some children home with backpacks with food in them, so they won't go hungry over the weekend, and we're talking about adding taxes on our real estate taxes? This, this is just crazy. Who's to say in a few years that someone down the road, if this passes, says, "Oh, I'd like more of this, and I'd like more of that, so we're going to increase the surcharge on our property taxes." I think you're opening a Pandora's Box, once you get started, saying, "I want to add a tax under property tax for this." What's to stop the next legion of people that want to add, add a tax on our property tax for something else? I don't know. I'm totally against adding a tax onto my property tax, and I'm not a Realtor, I have nothing to do with Realtors. I just have a chunk of land I'd like to keep, and I would like not to have to pay more taxes. I can't afford the taxes I have right now.
Thank you, Dorothy. All right. We're going to decide on this resolution, I guess, do we have a motion, folks?
Mr. President, I, I like to make a motion table to our next meeting. I think it's worth saving, and I think that as concern on this council, maybe we can come up with something, or a resolution to accomplish this goal, but I suspect that the council is divided. I think there's legitimate concerns, and I want to somehow save this, this resolution, because the land trust is, we're tied. I don't necessarily buy the financial aspect, because saving land with not houses on it does save taxpayers money, because you have one less kid or less children to educate, and there's a financial aspect to that. So I suspect it's not going to go anywhere tonight, and I'd like to make a motion that we place on our next agenda, and maybe if I can meet with the land trust or something, we can work on something that would be palatable to the council. So I make a motion, it'd be tabled until the next meeting.
Do we have a second, anyone? No second? Motion fails? All right, do we want to take up, do we have a motion on the resolution? No motion?
A motion.
Okay. So...
So you make no recommendations?
So we make no recommendations, okay.
I, I would like to say, I shook hands with Mr. Friday up at the State House last Wednesday, I hope you remember, because I remember seeing him throw spot things and things of that nature. I want to thank the land trust, and I thank Mrs. Gardner on her conservation, her service. Thank you so much.
We'll find a way.
We'll figure something out, folks.
We'll figure something out, guys.
Just, can I add one?
Yes.
I just would like to stress again that this is enabling legislation. Every town will have a chance later to vote on whether they want it, and to set the parameters. Once, and even once that's in place, there's a committee that, that gets appointed or elected. You have a choice as to how you set up this group, that will then make the decisions on how the money is used. It can go for recreation, it can go for land, it can go for historical and cultural. When, when I first read this stuff, I got excited, and I started, I was driving through town, I'm going past Crandall House, and I'm thinking, we could have a project that wanted, that we wanted to get done in this town, at Crandall House, a beautiful old historical building, and this money from this, you know, fund could, could be used for that. So it's not, it's not just...
Yeah, for those reasons, Marilyn, you know, that's why I would, would have supported this resolution, but, because we do have a chance to tweak it, and it's still going to be voted on by the residents, so, but anyway.
But once the state passes it, you have no choice. Once the state passes it, those $10 surcharges are permanent, and they can raise them, they can decide 10's not enough, it's 15, or it's 20. They can change it. And we, we want the land trust right now to deal with its own land, let alone all the other spaces. I would love you to deal with Crandall Field. Right now, we have our own land that needs to open itself up and bridge, and all kinds of things. They need money, I know you need money, Marilyn. If I could find a way to give you money, I will be happy to do that.
We'll tackle it, I guess, in the future, folks. Okay, thank you. Let's see, there are we. Next on the, next on the agenda is the authorize town council president to send a letter to the newly nominated Transportation Secretary Anthony Fox opposing proposed tolls along Route 95 in Hopkinton.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I got an email from a resident, and when the new Secretary of Transportation was, was voted in, or appointed, or whatever, elected, whatever.
Nominee.
Nominee. They were quick to point out that we need to get our letter campaign, as we did with the prior secretary, and our legislators, and governor, and everybody else, so, yes, Lisa?
Question, ask you, does, does this process involve confirmation before the mayor's body's, the cabinet, or is he in, unless he's not?
Well, it's a cabinet secretary position, I'm not sure.
We could be acting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We, we can send them out ready, just get them ready, yeah.
You can find it in the DOT, but you could be acting also, so.
We just don't want to waste any time, it's a subject that's near and dear to our hearts, obviously. So we had a motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Next on the agenda is schedule hearing day for petition for zoning ordinance amendment and zoning ordinance language amendment filed by Christine Austin and Amy Vashon, DBA, Doing Business As the Kids Company. Okay, Lisa, when can that happen?
Well, we have a timeframe that we have to accommodate, but we also have to advertise three times prior to the hearing, and that would bring us to June 3rd, as your earliest date, unless you schedule a special.
I don't think we need a special, but, June 3rd sounds fine to me, huh? So a regularly scheduled meeting. Pleasure.
Thank you.
That sounds fine.
Thank you.
Yep. Next, discuss and consider authorizing the town manager and town solicitor to enter into agreement between the state of Rhode Island, Department of Transportation, and the town of Hopkinton to obtain state funding of $176,429 pursuant to the proposed 2014 local roads program to improve the local roadways. Mr. McGary.
Thank you. Well, attached in your...
Thank you. Well, attached in your packet this evening is a proposed local roads program agreement between the State of Rhode Island Department of Transportation and the town of Hopkinton that would allow the town to obtain $176,429 to improve local roadways. In anticipation of the passage of the governor's budget, and this money is included in the governor's budget, and for revenue purposes, we included it in our CIP, includes statewide funding of $10 million for local road improvements. DOT is currently accepting applications for this program, and the funding is expected to be available after July 1 of this year. The funding is formula-driven, and the funds are allocated based on roadway mileage with a minimum funding level of $100,000 for each community. During the last several weeks, I met several times with DPW Director Tim Teft and Foreman Dave Caswell, DPW, to select proposed local roads to be improved through this program. And consequently, we completed Exhibit A, which includes two roads. The first one and the primary one is Die Hill Road, and the secondary and backup road is Oak Street, as local roadways to be improved with funds from this local program. The deadline date for the submission of Exhibit A to Rhode Island DOT is May 15 of this year. And the reason we chose two, as I defer to Tim Teft and Dave Caswell, who are both here tonight if there's any questions from the council, was that $176,000, we estimated the cost for Die Hill Road to be about $175,000, and just in case those bids came in low, we added Oak Street, which would cost another $30,000. So, the total package, although we're only earmarked of $176K, is about $205,000.
Thanks, Bill. Any questions for Bill?
No, thank God. I think it's fabulous. I have a question. We're considering authorizing the town manager and the town solicitor. I thought the town manager just entered into agreement. I know he always talks to you.
Natalie knows why they insist the solicitors on what they do.
Right.
DOT?
Yeah. I'd be happy not to, but they insist.
They insist, okay. Because I was going to say, I know he talks to you. You're there anyway, as far as I can tell. Okay, that's all. But thank you, and I hope you get it, and I hope you absolutely help Die Hill.
And we also had the contract reviewed by the Solicitor's Office prior to this evening.
So, if we have a motion that's listed on the bottom of that page for Bill's local roads program, if somebody wants to...
Okay, I'll make a motion that...
Motion that the Hopkinton Town Council authorize the town manager and town solicitor to enter into an agreement between the State of Rhode Island Department of Transportation and the town of Hopkinton, which would allow the town to obtain state funding of $176,429 for a proposed 2014 local roads program to improve local roadways.
Second, please.
Second.
Okay. Any other comments?
No.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, he just had it right there, Scott.
I didn't have it in front of me.
I know, he did, thank God.
A generic motion would have done it, but...
Well, it's here. I figured, might as well put it in. Thank you. Dave, Tim?
Tim, good luck. I hope you get it. Would that be done this summer? Next month? Oh, that's too bad. I'm sorry, guys. Sorry, citizens. Hey, but at least it's on the list.
Okay. Next...
We have to add one to this one, and a nice one to this one.
Right. Right, right.
Next on the agenda is...
Finally.
Finally, here we come to the matinee, right? The reason, I guess, the school committee members, I want to acknowledge them while they're here. If you guys want to come in the front, because we're going to be asking a few questions, I'm sure, and Greg Kenny's here, Georgia Yer, George Abbott. I appreciate you guys showing up, and I wanted to just preface this discussion with a few comments. The reason I wanted everybody to get together was, this was prior to any school budget vote being turned down, certainly, but it was more just to gain some insight and knowledge as to how we, as a council, can work together with you folks to, you know, get together on the budget, you know, talk about it. How can we make any changes, do anything that we need to do to protect the residents of the town? So, that was my premise and reason for asking you guys to come here, and maybe there's more meetings we should attend, or if we have the time. I don't know, but I was just looking for some answers from you folks as school committee members and longstanding school committee members on what your thoughts were, that, what we can do to help you, or possibly what you guys could do to help us. So, with that being said, I guess, does anybody have any quick general comments before we kind of go down these items here?
Other than the fact, I thank the three members of the school committee for being here. I can't, Amanda Blau, who's in DC, Cynthia mentioned to me, my son. I know, and I particularly want to note Mr. Abbott, who had a building committee meeting tonight, but he chose to be here, which is important, because we just don't meet with our school committee members, as we've tried in quite a few years now. So, I appreciate them being here, and I appreciate tonight.
Any quick general comments?
My general comment is just, I really appreciate the work that you did on the 23rd at the school committee meeting, trying to cut the budget. I really appreciate all the work that our school board did.
I just, I want the school committee members to understand that this is a really good opportunity to tell us what we can do for you. Sometimes, sometimes if you want a resolution pushed through, saying that we stand behind this movement or that movement of the educational process, you know, this is a good time to tell us, you know, you'd like to see us support a certain aspect or not support something. So, in general, that's how I see this meeting, give and take.
I just had a quick question, I guess. Now that we know that the budget was declined in April, we've got one coming up on the 14th. Essentially, if that gets turned down, we possibly could have one more vote, maybe mid-June. If that gets turned down, I guess, essentially, from what I gather, we'll be at the same figures we are currently at today. So, I assume everyone knows that, but, you know, because we, as a town, would have to pay for two more elections. They're not terribly expensive, but still roughly $1,500 per election, and we could possibly be at the same funding amount, but, as we are currently today. But, you know, I know this whole budget process has been a thorn in our side for many, many years, and, you know, I'm happy that the school committee voted to reduce what they did reduce, the 627 figure. Yes?
You're jumping ahead a little bit, because your next item is council comments discussion on that. You're limited to the items that you've got listed here to discuss with this council.
And then at the end, we still do the budget.
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'm sorry. You're excited. Sorry. But anyway, so, all right, without further ado, let's, number one is update on the Campus 2010 finances. Anybody from our school committee wishing to chime in on that particular?
We've got about $14,000 left that we have to spend. There's an issue we might want to address in the high school, but we've got to bring it before the school committee first, before we decide. We just spent it on that part of the building, or we spend it on other parts, like ADA and stuff like that, to bring it down to zero. So, we're working with $14,000, $15,000.
What did you end up spending ultimately? What was the final bill ultimately? Because I know it went down. It wasn't the same amount that we started with.
Hey, Greg. Anyone speaking? If you guys can go to the podium, it'd be helpful, just for the viewers.
Yes.
Greg, can you go to the podium, please? Just for the public.
The grand total was $20,553,000.
$553,000. $20,553,000. So, that was less than we approved originally.
Right.
Do you know...
There's $1,044,000 that we didn't borrow.
$1,044,000 we didn't borrow. Great. That's very good. Thank you. Is that because of the bond ratings and the interest?
Yeah, you know, a lot of it, the bids came in lower than we anticipated. That was a big part of it. The incentive, the bond incentives helped significantly, and, you know, we got a lot more done than we anticipated being done, and we still had money left over.
Okay, that's great. Does anyone else have a comment? Georgia, do you have a comment?
I'm sorry. Wait, Georgia. No, that's fine. Go ahead. I think this is something that the council could help me with. A while back, we got a bill in our bill packets at the school committee meeting, and the bill was from Motown Service Company. It was for $15,000 and change. I wasn't aware that we had gone out to bid for anything, and $15,000 is more than the $5,000 limit that you'll have to go out to bid for, so I questioned that particular bill. That's the only reason I questioned it, was because it was more than the $5,000. And what I found out was that the building committee had gone out to bid with Motown, and they had a contract with them to do some work for the 2010 project. The 2010 project didn't have enough money to pay for it, so Brian Stanley was asked to find the money, and he got the money from our regular budget out of the capital fund in our regular budget. So, when that happened, I wanted to question the attorney, and I wanted to get some reasoning behind it, and how come that happened? Because I was under the understanding that we came in under budget, so we should have money. But we didn't have money to pay it, because we had to get $15,000 from a different area in our, in our school budget, not from the 2010 project. So, I asked if I could get a ruling from the attorney, and I was denied that by the school committee. They said, "No." So, we have to ask permission. So, I was told, "No." I said, "Well, can I talk to the accountant or the auditor?" And I was told that I didn't have to, that that wasn't a problem, to get permission. So, I called him the next day, and I explained to him my concerns, and I don't want to tell you my concerns, because there's more concerns here than, than just they took the money. If they took the $15,000 from a different account, and I was told that that 2010 project was all going to come from one account, it was all going to be coming from one account area, and that's how we could be sure, because I had found a couple of other items that they had gotten into our regular budget for, and so I was assured that all the money would come from one, one account. I got to thinking about what happens, and this $15,000, if it was taken from this other account, didn't get bonded for. So, we're paying for all of that one shot, bang. It's not being bonded out of, you know, for a 20-year period of time, so that the taxpayer gets to pay for it that way, and that's how we voted, was to have it bonded. That's how the taxpayer voted, and that's how it was advertised. The other problem that I see is that we were promised that we would be paying this a third, a third, a third, and sharing it evenly with the three towns. If we take it from this other account, from the school regular budget, we're going to be paying for it by the head count that we do. So, that's not going to be the same. And then my third concern is, I was under the understanding that we came in under budget. Now, Greg's just told us we got $14,000 left. We got $15,000 already from another area. I need explanation for this, and I can't get it, and you could help me, you know, you could help me and the taxpayer get that kind of explanation, because I...
Georgia, what did you want us to do, I guess? I guess, what did...
Well, I see a second question, or the third one on the list is talking about an audit. Or maybe you could request the answers to these three questions. How are we funding that? And then there's a, there's a fourth question that comes up. I happened to catch this one. How many others are out there in our budget that I didn't catch, or I can't figure out? I don't know that answer, but I don't have any comfort when I can't get the transparency that I need when I ask the questions. And I have the bill right here in my hand, if you'd like the bill, and we have clerk base, which is another thing that I'll talk about. And if you'd like to look on clerk base, and you pull this minutes up, you can see what happened and what the discussion was at the school committee meeting, and how I was denied the right to talk to the attorney and figure this out. So, another thing you could do is, I think you could save clerk base, which they are trying to get rid of in the budget, because I think we need it for transparency. And it's not the same as having the school tape a meeting, just tape it and put it and have it available. Clerk base not only tapes the meeting, but it also has it organized so that you can just by agenda, ask for any agenda item, and just watch that. You don't have to sit there for three hours and watch the whole meeting to try and find what you're, what you're trying to get the answers to. So, that's, that's what I want to say about the building committee, that there's questions in my mind as to, I don't understand, and I'm not able to get the answers.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead, Scott.
I'd like to ask Mrs. Yurk question, and specifically, the question is, is it required by law, as far as I know of budgets, that only the money dealing with the construction and related stuff has to come from the bond money and not from the general operating money? Is that correct?
I'm not an accountant, and I'm not a lawyer, and that's what I wanted answers for, Scott, and all's I know is I have questions, and I explain them to you, and...
As far as I know, you don't have to be either, that normally, on a budget, that money for a thing supposed to be taken out of the line item, that covers that, although I know the school committee and the work of operation setup has the power to change light on it by a vote of the school committee. But what I'm hearing is that money that was appropriated in a bond to use in the construction of the new facility was not used, and it was taken out of the general operating. That's what I'm hearing.
You're hearing that money that was supposed to be taken out of the 2010 project, all right?
Was not.
Was not, and it came out of another area, and the area I was told it came out of was the regular school budget, and it came out of the capital fund, the capital account. And it wasn't even explained. It was just in with the bills. It was just in with the bills. Only if I had brought this up as a question, would it ever have been questioned. It just would have slipped through in the bills.
So, you're asking us, Georgia, to...
For the taxpayers, all right. They didn't pay it a third, a third, a third, I don't believe. They didn't pay it on a bonding, you know, over a 20-year period. Did this come in under budget, or didn't it? And then, how many other things might have slipped through? So, on your second or third question, which talks about an audit, I think maybe that's, that's a reason why you might want to do it.
Georgia, are you telling me that anything over $5,000 has to have the approval, any line item movement, has to have the approval of the school committee? Is that correct? Is there, is there a figure that...
This isn't in a line item. This was supposed to be in a separate account.
Okay. Is there a figure, and I heard you say something about $5,000. Is there a figure that they miss, under, under a certain amount, that the administration can move from one line item to another line item?
I believe there is, but this particular thing triggered me because it didn't go out for bid through us. It went out for bid, though, but it went out through the building committee. So, it should have all come out of the 2010 project and the building committee's money, not coming back into our school budget and our budgeted items, even though they were for capital. It wasn't for that specific project that it went out to bid for.
So, out of $20 million, it's $15,000?
That I know of. That I know of. And I... And I could get into some other issues now, but maybe we'll get into them later. But we should have an accounting manual that has all of these things in it. That you just asked me about how you operate, if this can happen, if that can happen. We don't have one at present. The auditor was asked to have one a number of times and it's never been done. And I believe this year, because of some of the problems that we've had, that it's being requested to be done. But again, I don't have a lot of comfort in what I'm seeing.
Okay.
I was at that meeting, Georgia, when you brought that, the fifteen thousand up. I don't, I don't have a problem with the school finishing paying for the bill with the fifteen thousand. I don't have a problem with them correcting a, a problem that wasn't able to be completed through the 2010 budget. That part I don't have a problem with. I don't have a problem with the school deciding to continue and fix and finish fixing the bathrooms that were the problem. I don't have that issue. I think what you're bringing up though, is the procedural issue. Is that there is no procedure, because the fifteen thousand should have gone through the school committee, should have gone through bid, because it came from the school budget, not from the 2010 budget. I think the problem is a procedural problem. And I think that's one of the things you're bringing up that needs to be addressed. It's just the procedural issues.
There's more than that, Barbara.
I know that. But in this particular one, they were finishing a project that didn't have enough money. That, you know, they were doing the bathrooms. They needed, they got into the bathrooms, found it was worse than they thought, and they needed the additional money. I don't have any problem with the school finishing a project any way that they can. I do understand your concern though, because the concern is there is no procedural way to do that correctly.
I don't think that you can go out to the taxpayers
I understand.
And do, and advertise that you're going to do something one way and then turn around and do it another.
I understand, but it's procedural. It's called when you have a problem.
No, there's more than procedure here, Barbara.
I know, but it's called when you have a problem, what do you do? Where, what's the pattern? And there isn't one yet because the auditors have asked for that.
I think that at that point in time, there should have been transparency. And they should have come to the school committee, laid out the situation.
Absolutely.
And we had a problem and we needed to fix it.
I agree with that.
And not just try and...
Exactly.
And, and we, we need to, you know, have, have better situation than, than what we did that way. And if you want to ask the attorney or you want to get to the accountant, you should be able to do that.
Well, and also, you are absolutely right. If they had the problem, it should have come to the school committee and did not. There was no procedural way for that to happen. And that is a mistake. I don't have a problem that it's fixed.
Well, it did come to them because I tried to bring it to them. But I got stonewalled.
Correct.
We can go on and on about this whole thing, I mean...
Well, Greg's sitting right here and Greg's the chairman of the building committee.
No, I know.
I mean, so, you know, he's either got the answers or he doesn't to those three questions or four questions I have.
We're not going to argue with folks. The reason I wanted to bring you folks together was to answer questions. It's not to point fingers, it's not to do anything other than that. What I'm going to do going forward is, we've got 11 items on this list. So I'm going to read the item.
We have plenty of time.
No, I know that. But I'm going to read the, I'm just procedurally, this is what we're going to do. Number two, I'm going to read the item. Whoever wants to tackle it goes to the podium. We'll fire off any questions that, that the council may have. And you guys can pipe in any information you want to convey to us. Like I said, the main reason for us getting together is to learn from each other. And it gives us a chance, because I think our school committee members haven't been together with the council in some time now. So I'm going to start with number two, the impact of sequestration on the 2010 debt. My understanding is about twenty thousand, our impact possibly. Does anyone want to tackle it? Georgia?
I don't have the figure, but according to...
Can you get up to the podium, George, just for the mic?
I don't have the exact figure, but according to the finance director, everything is contingent on congressional action. So there is no correct figure now that we can share with you.
Okay.
That I'm aware of unless...
Greg, come up please. Okay, thanks, Georgia. Number three, the...
Is that, is that, is the impact of sequestration just on the debt? It's not on any other portion of the school budget or school bond? Just simply on that interest, on the interest?
Because it's federally funded, federally sourced.
Okay, only on the interest.
I think, I think they said about twenty thousand at the meeting. It wasn't a lot of money. Number three, the commissioning of a detailed audit of finances at Charahoe. Boy, what a loaded question. I'm going to start out by saying, I know that folks want management study slash audit and, you know... Georgia, you want to give us a couple of comments on that?
The, the budget is audited. So I guess, what do you mean by detailed?
Well, I think forensic audit of some sort, outside management, some, someone outside of the organization.
The issue of a management study has come up on many occasions. And it doesn't seem to have any traction on the school committee. You know, I, I'd be in favor personally. But it, you know, the, the support, the real politic, you know, of getting something like that done doesn't seem to exist.
What about a forensic audit, same thing?
I, I think a forensic audit, you'd have to point out some serious, you know, malfeasance, malfeasance or criminality. And I don't think that's been alleged. But it's my understanding of a forensic audit.
The next question I would have on that is, is the, the point that Georgia described. In order to review something, something is not applied to the right place in the budget. Then in order to pick up on that, I mean, would a regular audit pick up what she described if it's true? Or would you need a detailed audit for something like that?
No, they have auditors.
It wouldn't be malfeasance, it might just be an error.
We definitely need to have something looked into more specifically than what it has been. And when they do an audit, it's not any kind of a forensic audit. And they've missed a lot of these things in the past.
But we, we can't do anything. I mean, that's for the school committee to vote on, right? And have a quorum and...
You own a third at Charahoe.
Well, I know, but we can't authorize...
And, and you're, you're people in the town, right?
But procedurally, I don't think we can authorize anything.
You can authorize it, but you can certainly request it as owners.
Do you know a cost of a forensic audit?
Have no idea. It would depend on what you ask them to look into.
Well, the forensic is the entire thing. It's not just one section, is it?
Depends on what you wanted them to look into.
I'd like to remind the council that regional school districts are not common because we don't have the power to approve the school budget like a single member town. But we deny the, that opportunity because of the uniqueness of being a town and regional school district. But in other towns, and the state still expects us to stay within a 4% cap, our school costs as well as our general government costs. So we have responsibility, the state, to stay within that, that cap that they, they give us. And we, our school sec, our, our school portion is considered at 4% for that.
Number four, a management study. Obviously, I think there's some members of the council that have been big proponents of that. Anyone out in the school committee that wants to touch upon that subject?
I would certainly support it, but that, again, there doesn't seem to be any support among most of, a majority of, of the current school committee members to have a management study.
Georgia, why do you think that is?
I, I think, you know, there's sort of a, a belief that the administration is doing a good job. And that to have an outside management study would somehow insult them.
I speak to you.
Hold on, let's have a little stuff.
My understanding, because I go to the school committee meetings, is my understanding is they actually have had a line item for a management study for the last couple of years. You are absolutely correct that it's not for an outside management study. They use the hundred thousand or so, the money involved for an inside. They feel like they can take the school board members and study the management problem, whether it's on food service or busing. But I have heard them say at a meeting that they have had a management study line item. They've had it for several years. It's about a hundred thousand. And they have been using it for internal study. You weren't on the board at the time, Georgia, when you were off, honey. It was an internal study rather than an external. They have never been interested in the external.
But again, the real politic is that there is no support on the school committee
Correct.
for a management, an outside management study. And I'll stand by that.
Yep, exactly, I agree.
Thanks, Georgia. Yes, Scott.
I've been a proponent of an outside management study for a number of years. And I still support an outside management study. The dilemma that we have in the town of Hopkin is, we have a town, in our present town budget, that is like seventy-five dollars less than the previous year and we just have a moderate increase. And this town, this council, whoever our successors are, to keep taxes written within reason and people paying several thousand dollars to keep, to pay property taxes, seventy-five percent which go to the school system. And I believe in an outside management study. And if you look at budgets, they tend to be labor, they're, they're all labor intensive. And I think it's very difficult to look at labor costs objectively. I think that they should get somebody that knows how schools are run, knows how staffing are, and to look and make a report on the schools. The Charahoe budget is tremendously increased just in the last 10 years. I think it was way down in the forty thousand dollar range. And it's, and the big question is where are we going to be 10 years from now? How is that going to continually impact the town of Hopkin? So I think, I do think we need an outside management study. I think that we, and they should look at positions in other ways to save money. But it's very difficult for self-examination when you're dealing with labor costs, which is the biggest component of a budget. And I find it particularly interesting that the town of Hopkin, when it comes to our town employees, that we question whether or not we're going to make somebody full-time because it impacts their benefits and things of that nature. And yet Charahoe has plenty of staff, everything from administrators, teachers, and other staff people. And the big question is, you know, maybe the town of Hopkin would like to bring on some more staff to be more, better serve the people of Hopkin. And yet our school system seems to have a lot of employees. And I definitely think it needs to be looked at. Thank you.
I don't think we should add any more employees for the town, but anyway.
But I'm just saying that.
We had an oil leak over at Charahoe. It was under the middle school. I'm getting to the, I'll get where we want to go. What happened?
You want number five?
I am. Ended up happening on an emergency basis. They called in, they got a contractor, they didn't go out to bid. Contractor there was 10 years he was there. We got milked like a cow, all right? Cost the taxpayers lots and lots of money. This kind of thing happens. It's why we need an audit. It's why we need... What happened is that money that we used wasn't even budgeted for, for the contractor. It came out of the surplus. Now, when things come out of the surplus, Hopkin puts money into the surplus at X amount of dollars. When you use the surp, not the surplus, into the budget. They put the money into the budget at X amount of dollars by a head tax. Thirty-eight, thirty-nine, thirty-seven percent, whatever it is. When you use the surplus, you, you're getting it back at thirty-three percent. Or thirty-three and a third, a third, a third, a third. Every time you use the surplus, because we've put in the money at more or a higher rate, we're losing money. Another town's taking advantage of our money. So whenever the surpluses are used, we lose. When this oil spill happened, all right, we lose. So you're asking me why we need a management study and why we need an audit? These are things we have to stop preventing. Because every time we have to get into our surpluses, because there's an emergency or we make mistakes, it costs us money.
Number five, I guess, is about that career and technical center building. I, I know from my meetings with Barry, we have not taken title to that building yet because of some deficiencies discovered in an inspection. So I don't know, Greg, you want to? You know, I've heard some figures about what it might cost to cure it. You know, maybe you could just kind of give us an update, has anything happened?
It's currently in litigation. There was a clause when we started to take over the CTC, that if certain conditions came up in the original building, the state would pick up the tab or be financially responsible. And the state has taken the position that that's only in case there was a lawsuit, somebody got hurt, that they would cover that damage. And it is not worded that way. It is worded in such a way that if we found a structural deficiency in the building, seeing the state did the original construction, the state would pick up that. And that's where we are, we're in litigation, talking about that.
Yeah, and I know Barry has also mentioned that I think his administration reached out to the state to share in the cost of the inspection and they declined.
And they declined that too also. They're being very hard-nosed about it.
It's a lot of money, I think, at stake perhaps.
Yeah, but you know, it's part of the original
Right.
building you didn't find until you took the facial bricks off. And then you say, oh my God.
It's in rot.
You know?
Thanks, Greg.
I'd just like to tell, say to Mr. Kenny that I thank him for coming here tonight instead of the building committee meeting because I think that's important. The thing that really concerns me when we talk about, it should be on the budget to revenue sources, but it's related to the career and technical center, that we have to make a firm plea to the state to consistently address the, the needs of vocational technical students of career. That's what they call it when I was in school, career and technical students throughout the state and not to... They, I believe the Met School and Davies Boatech are fully funded. And through the years, through the decades, and Greg is a couple of years older than me, he was ahead of me in school, that when they built that, the state has never really treated the people in this part of the state fairly or in other parts of the state, with the exception of the Met School and Davies, that they should even-handedly address the problems of vocational, technical, or careering, as they call it now, career and technical centers throughout Rhode Island, because there's no excuse for it.
Thanks. Next is Superintendent Ritchie's charter school request. I know that...
I wanted to talk about the Boatech again.
Oh.
Charahoe Act states that when you expand the scope of the district, there's supposed to be a referendum by the people. And the people are supposed to vote in the three towns to do that kind of thing. And the school committee voted alone to accept the Boatech from the state. And I think it was a big mistake. I think it was wrong. I don't think we followed the Charahoe Act. And I just want to let you know and the people know that it's very, very important that when we expand the scope of the district, and we did, I know the state was providing bo-technical services. But when we decided to take it over, the building and those services, it cost our taxpayers money. And now they have to maintain, if that comes through, because it hasn't come through as of yet. If it comes through, we're going to have to maintain that building. We're going to have to heat it and light it, all right? And you wonder why the taxes go up, even though the population of kids go down. It's things like that that happen.
We do that now. Right, we do that now, don't we? We, we pay for lighting and heat for that building. We pay for the whole building.
District pays the whole.
The whole.
The whole.
We haven't taken owner, well, Charahoe has not taken ownership of that building yet, so...
But we pay for the whole sh, sh, literally.
Who wants to tackle the charter school? I know there's some...
Oh, I do.
Any school committee members want to tackle, tackle that? An update, I know that Barry, last time I saw him, he wanted folks to testify. I think that's coming up. Maybe Greg, you can just touch upon that.
Yeah, I know, I know it's coming up before the legislature or the, or the border regions. But I've always believed with the charter schools, if you're a high-performing district, why should you have to pay for tuition for charter school? You know, just to bust them away and, you know, we've, we've got an outstanding district and, you know, we're ponying up a million, million four a year for charter school tuition. It just doesn't make sense. Never has and never will. I don't care what...
Because of the high-achieving schools that we...
Right, I mean, that's, you know, the, the movement in charter schools is good for those schools that are not performing well. Like Providence, like Providence doesn't have to have fire inspections, apparently. And they don't have to have all these details done. And they don't have to have all these details done that they insist that we do do. It just isn't fair.
Yes, Barbara.
I have to, I actually agree with Superintendent Ritchie's charter school request. I don't have a problem with parents sending their students wherever they would like. But if the school is not rated as highly as Charahoe, it may, and this is really only for elementary and into the low-middle grades, because they come back to the high school.
Right now, yeah.
And once they come back to the high school, we have to teach them and bring them up to snuff. And I consider that a real waste of my money. I'm teaching them once, and now I'm teaching them a second time, and I'm re-teaching them. If it is a higher, a higher-rated charter school, I think that's fine. I have no problems at all with parents sending their kids to a higher-rated charter school. I think that's fine. But just for environmental, and then they don't have the math and sciences when they get back to us in seventh and eighth grade. And we have to tutor them up to snuff, I think is a double waste of money. So I have to say I agree with him thoroughly on that. And if a parent wants to send a child to a higher rated, when I'm certainly behind them, I think it's absolutely fabulous they should do it in a heartbeat.
As long as the charter schools and the other schools, which are both public schools, are rated the same, by the same standards, okay? Everybody has to be judged by...
Well, I mean academic standards. I don't really care about the fire rating.
You know, everybody else, you know, this is, you know, what they say, oh, you're high-achieving, higher...
I want to know what their grades are, their scores are. And if their scores are higher, great. If their scores are lower, forget it.
Yeah.
Next up, number seven, the information on the one-to-one technical program, total cost of the program, cost per unit, associated costs in repair and replacement of units. I think this, what this is, is, Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, I know this is a hot button issue from Mr. Husband, but it's the replacement ultimately, at least coming up. And they're going to start by doing two grades of lap tax?
Yeah, this is a gradual bringing up to the technology, the iPad, stuff like that. Right now, we're in a position where we haven't even decided on a vendor, whether we're going Apple, Macintosh. We're still interviewing vendors in discussions with other states and districts that have done this. They say the real crux of it is the software you use and what you, how you get your books, and stuff like that, how much that's going to cost you. Because I guess they keep telling us that the hardware is not the real issue right now. And until we get into the total thing of it, what it's going to cost. Yeah, right. Until we get, you know, and as we gradually get into this and gradually convert the whole system over, we'll see how we're doing, whether it works or not. I don't know. You know, this is with leasing the equipment rather than buying the equipment outright. It gives us an opportunity to adjust as we go along and with the kids coming and going.
Is that all taxpayer-funded from the three communities, or is it some grant funding?
There's some grant money to upgrade the facilities to handle that much information going in and out. Wi-Fi. If that doesn't happen, we don't have the money to even begin it. I forget what the figure was. It's coming, it's supposed to come from our share from the state. I think it's a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy thousand, something like that.
It's a neat concept, but I don't know. I'll have to see. Yeah, go ahead, Dave. Do you want to chime in on that?
Oh, I'd like to take a minute. Greg, well, I've got a lot of problems with this thing, and the more I hear from Mr. Ritchie, the more problems I have with this. Number one, he met with us, or he met at a town hall meeting here. Some people attended, not very many, but they were councilors here. And I asked him at that point, I said, what are we talking about here? Are we talking about a Kindle or are we talking about a laptop? And what kind of laptop? Are we talking about a cheaper one, or a less expensive one, or a more expensive one? And what kind of a iReader? Are we talking Kindle Fire or are we talking the basic model? And he couldn't tell me. He called them instruments. I see here, and I think George putting, I believe George put this thing together, I see here we have a device. So there's not, nobody knows what we're buying here. So it's, they're coming to the taxpayers, they're asking us to fund something, to buy something, and fund quite a bit of money here, to purchase something that they don't know what they're going to purchase yet, whether it's going to be something that's going to cost two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars or seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. And so I've got a real problem with that. It seems like, I think it's a wonderful idea. I think getting those books off those kids' backs and those backpacks, it's a horrendous situation. My daughter's down in Wesley, she carries around thirty pounds worth of books. It's ridiculous. But if we don't know what kind of instruments we're going to be purchasing, and it's a lot, a lot of money. I think that all the Ts have been crossed, I think the Is have been dotted. I think we're going out there with an idea, which is probably a really good idea, but I don't think all the bases have been touched. And I'm a little disappointed to find out when he tells me they don't know what they're going to be buying with a whole lot of money. And what happens if they buy, if, this figure must represent a certain cost per unit instrument.
I believe it does.
Okay. And what happens if they buy, oh, if they lease, actually not buying them, they're leasing them? And is it a three-year, three-year lease program?
Yes, that's what we want. That's what we're aiming for in the contract.
Is it a lease to buy it at the end? Can we purchase these things?
Sorry.
That is to be a consideration in the lease when we decide on, say, we decide on Apple. We get a lease, say, okay, what is the best you can do for us? This is what we want. We want this lease with maybe an option to buy out at the end. Not a mandatory, maybe an option.
I've got to believe, I've got to believe, Greg, that they have an idea of what they want. Somebody has an idea to put that number down there on that list and say, we need X amount of, I said hundreds of thousands of dollars to, you know, to institute this program.
Right.
Could he, but Mr. Ritchie wouldn't tell me what it was. He wouldn't say, oh, yes, we're looking, we're looking hard and fast at Kindles or Nooks or Mac iPads or something.
I think it's still in the investigative stage.
We're still, we're still searching.
But it's in the budget.
Well, we had to have a number, so we took a high figure, figuring, you know.
And what do you do with the surplus if it's a lower figure?
I don't see how it will be, because it's, you know, you can buy a cheap one, sure. Right out of Taiwan, right off the boat, you know? But if you want an Apple that has already educationally structured its device, the handle, the software, and the software to go with that device, it's a lot less problems down the road than it would be if you went... So if you take all this and you look at, I know he talked with the state of Maine, and they've already done it. They did it five years ago.
Okay.
And he talked long and hard, the forty, I think it's forty-member committee that originally started this, that they started to look at this. And they talked with them, with those individuals. So they have a ballpark figure of what it costs per unit.
Greg, if I asked you, if I said, Greg, give me sixty dollars, because I want to go buy dinner, you'd say, geez, sixty bucks? And I'd say, yeah, yeah. And you'd say, what kind of dinner are you looking for? And I'd say, I don't know yet. It might be McDonald's. But then again, it might be a really nice restaurant up in Providence. You wouldn't be pleased with that.
Not unless I went along.
And as a taxpayer, I'm not pleased with him asking for this kind of money without knowing what I'm paying for. And that's what aggravates me. I want to, I want to know what he's going to do with that money, and he's not telling me. He's going to buy instruments. I don't know what kind of instruments, whether they're two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars or seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. I don't know. Not buy, excuse me, lease.
Right.
And he doesn't know whether he can actually do anything with these instruments, whatever they may be, at the end of three years. He's hoping that maybe he can buy them at the end of the three years and continue to use them.
Then, you know, that'll be a consideration in the end of the lease.
I can go on, right?
On the website, Charahoe's website, One-to-One, it gives you a lot of the information pertaining to this project, you know. I just know that there are a lot of things on the table yet, you know. Nothing's carved in stone. I understand it's a lot of money, obviously. But we'll have to, to be continued, because I don't think they've went through all the vendors that they're supposed to go through and...
No. And the thing is, the thing is, it's coming down the road. And if we start looking at it now, we'll have an idea.
Yes?
I just wanted to say, I really am in support of this program, the One-to-One. I do think they're going to make mistakes, because everybody will. But I think the whole generation that is being raised right now is technological, is savvy. And we are not, at least I personally am not. I do think it's the right way to go. I just hope they make as few mistakes as possible as they're trying to establish the program. These kids have to go from senior year to college on the ground and running. And they're going to need to know how to use the technology now, because in college, they don't teach them how to use the iPods or iPads or whatever they are. You're supposed to know how to use them academically when you get there, freshman day, number one. And I think it's really important that we do it. I am hoping that they make as few mistakes as possible. I do support them. I do wish there was more information, to say the very least. And I'm hoping it will mean the reduction of staff, ultimately.
Ultimately, I believe it will.
I would like it to, because that's really where the deep cuts have to come, at least next year. You've got to come in staff and administration. I mind. We're not at the budget yet, though.
Thanks, Greg.
Thanks, Greg. Yes, George.
Personally, I think Apple products are too expensive and overrated. I'm sort of a Kindle sort of guy myself. What upset me about this whole issue was there's been some discussion about, you know, the kids having to turn these devices in at the end of the school year and for the department to actually spend money to cleanse them and store them. So I don't know what that's all about. I think it's something that needs to be looked into very carefully.
Can I ask you a question? Obviously, college is a lot different than when, a number of us went to college. I graduated at U.R.I. in nineteen eighty. And I graduated at Charahoe in seventy-one, so that's a long time ago, in junior college in seventy-eight. The question I have is, how do we compare with other school districts on this technology, which I don't have an answer to?
I was with Barry. I don't know that there's any other school, regional school districts that have that technology yet in the state. I think, I think Barry was talking to a...
Doesn't the Met School have it?
Oh, Dorothy, hold on.
There's a couple of schools in Providence that have it.
Yeah, but I said regional school districts. The only, the only one that Barry was talking about with the meeting I had with him was Massachusetts Regional School District, that he was talking to them, finding out what was up and what the cost was and all that stuff. So to my knowledge, there's nothing in the state that we can kind of judge.
The entire state of Maine is, you know, can you trust relatives? So you could check into those statistics if you wanted to look at them.
We have a technology department, and we have a couple of people, two, three people that work in the technology department. And I'm not hearing enough from those people at this point on this, you know, this project to feel comfortable. And I've asked a number of the questions that Mr. Husband has asked, and I'm not getting answers either. And one of the things I was told is I could go to Barry's office, and he has a big book there, and I can look at the book. But I would like to see a cost analysis done, something presented in my hand that I could, you know, really get a handle on where we're going and what we're trying to do. And I am for technology, and I think we have to go that way, or we're going to get left in the dust. But I don't want to make a mistake any more than I have to, because it can be a horrendous mistake. And we can't afford to make mistakes. And I know in my business, when I do something, I look to see the best people that I can and what they've done. And then I try to copy them. And I hope that we're going to do something like that at Charahoe and not try and reinvent our own wheel, because we can't afford it. I can't afford it in my business, and we can't afford it at Charahoe.
Thanks. Number eight is budgetary revenue sources. I know one large revenue source that seems to be, I guess seems to have been eliminated, which was the regional bonus from the state. Maybe one of you folks could, I can't remember the figure on what we lost. I know Mr. Ritchie has contacted myself and the other two presidents to try and reach out to the representatives at the legislature to try and see about getting that going again. Does anybody have a rough figure on what we may have lost? Greg, do you have any idea on the bonus?
No, I don't have, I don't have an exact figure on what we lost. But I know we're losing, you're losing reimbursement, two-hundred thousand dollars a year for the next...
Ten years, I think.
Well, it's ten years overall. I think we're in the third year.
Oh, third year, okay, right.
So we've still got another seven to go. So, I mean, it's a million four overall, which is, it's a big number.
And we, from what I understand, too, we were promised that bonus to regionalize, and then something happened. And it seems like someone at the Department of Education, perhaps, reneged on this. I'm not sure, but maybe you could speak to that.
You can probably, pointing is that the urban districts, you know, saying, we don't want to get together. We can do better by ourselves. Whereas we figured we could save money by grouping together. And there was a push to do that, and it started, and now, you know, I blame the urban districts saying, you know, they're getting money that we're not, they're willing to do stuff we're not willing to do. So why should they get paid? And that they have more votes than we do.
Right.
So that's, I think, where it all lies.
Yeah, I got four things on this. Number one, I do look forward to testifying at the State House on a regional bonus. This is just another example of where we've been sold short. We have the career and technical thing, which is a fact, with the Met example and Davies Votech, which is provable, not just an off-the-cup remark, which is known. At the omnibus meeting, I propose that we look, try to start looking at other ways of the property tax to fund education. I think that's the historical problem in the Charahoe district. I think it's a problem that every city and town has. And we should be looking at working with the RAL Association of School Committees and the RAL League of Cities and Towns to start the discussion of finding another way other than property tax to fund education. We rely too heavily on it. People rebel against it and often vote against referents because of it. It impacts our operation of the general government of this town. And the longer that we delay taking the initiative on that topic, and it's not only us, it's throughout the state, because other states are all looking at that, this over-reliance on the property taxes, and, let's see. That's, I guess, all I have to say.
Okay. Thanks, Scott. Barbara?
I also agree that the real problem is revenue. Taxes are certainly a problem, you know, day in and day out. But the real problem with the educational system is revenue. And we need new revenue sources. Property tax is unsustainable over the long haul, especially as some of the costs continue to go up. And I am particularly frustrated at the unfunded mandates that we are expected to carry. One of them in particular is, as far as I'm concerned, medical expenses. We spend five million dollars, which is ten percent of our budget, on medical, doctor, dental, social work, medical issues. Speech therapists, physical therapists, occupational therapists, social workers, dentures, doctors, psychiatrists, psychologists. These are medical costs, not educational costs, and I get very, very upset about those. I personally think that if we're going to have those costs, and if there are unfunded mandates to help a child learn, we can bill Medicaid, we're allowed to bill, so they know it's a medical cost, not an educational cost. We should be able to bill health insurance. Everyone has to carry it now. Obamacare is out there. Everyone has to have health insurance. Health insurance has massive pockets. And I think they should be responsible for picking up all of the costs of speech therapists, physical therapists, occupational therapists, psychologists, psychiatrists, and whomever else that the school department has to pay for. I also think since we're teaching, since we are teaching parents how to get jobs to improve their situation, that the Department of Labor and Training should be paying for that rather than our property tax. I think there are other places for us to go for revenue. And I think people need to pay attention that there are sources out there. They are certainly avant-garde sources, things we have never considered. But if they're out there, I would like them at least addressed through the Department of Health, Department of Education, and the Department of Labor and Training. And I think those five million or ten percent of our budget can be covered through an entirely different source and not through the property tax. We need new... We need new revenue sources. It's crucial. And I don't really want to put it on income tax. We are taxed heavily enough on our income as well.
Can I just follow up on one thing? One of the things that I did bring up at the omnibus meeting, I think is crucial politically, is the fact that we need, and hopefully that this legislation about the regionalization bonus will be able to make us bond with the other regional school districts. Crucial politically, the town of Hopkinton, between Charro towns, as well as the regional school districts and the member towns, to get together and try to strengthen that political muscle at the State House. It's crucial because regional school districts are small towns like this or one or the smaller towns in Rhode Island. So, it's crucial that some, we do something politically to strengthen our hand in that direction.
Thanks, Scott. Number nine is Charro Act Revision Committee. Just to give folks a head, you can come to the podium, but I'm just going to preface your comments. I was at a meeting with Barry and the other two presidents and I think, I spoke only for myself that I think we were maybe open to possibly, again, we'd have to have a vote, obviously, to opening that act up to some regard. Richmond was okay with that, but Charlestown will not, so it's not going to go anywhere. So, just a side note, you know, I don't want anybody to be under the assumption that that may happen. When I met with Tom and Joe and Barry, it ain't happening, unfortunately.
Yeah, I don't think it would benefit the town of Hopkinton to open that up unless there was some sort of tax equalization included, at least for like heating, maintenance. You know, I can see using the current formula to pay actual teachers, but when you get into the other stuff, I mean, we have to pay, you know, a higher percentage than a certain other town just to heat the buildings and for the maintenance staff. I mean, that has never really been looked at. So, if you could include that in, you know, the agenda for a Charro Act Revision Committee, I think that would be a good thing.
Well, yeah, to your point, George, I, as well as Joe Reddish from Richmond, said that, you know, "We can take whatever you want off the table and have us come together on an agenda." Still not, still would not. So, I don't hold much hope about, you know, although I understand that equalization stuff makes them nervous in Charlestown.
Here again, the real politic in Charleston has not done to support that. And I, quite frankly, if I lived in Charleston, I'd want it to remain as it is. So, what do you know, you know, the real, really, in my mind, the ball is in your court. You know, do you want to make a legal challenge?
Right. Yes, Dave.
Was Charleston against Richmond's recommendation to open it up? Because Richmond had some recommendations in there that they stated. Now, am I to assume that Charleston is flat, not going to...
Yet.
Regardless of what Richmond proposes or what we propose?
Correct. There was some initial, at that same meeting, Joe Reddish said, "I will amend any letters that went to your town that would beat your liking," and because that was initially what put him on guard. And basically, he said, you know, "I can amend those." And Tom said, "That's fine, but I'm still not interested in opening it up." But initially, that was his concern. Joe said that he would amend the letter and send whatever you need out. And Tom said, "No, thank you."
I've been around since the beginning of Charro. I walked in the door when it opened as a student. And I've been involved in the school and what's going on over there and on these committees to change the Charro Act before. And it's only going to be done through legal means, if it's going to be done. And I don't think you should be wasting your time because, like I said, I've been there. I've seen what's happened. It goes to a point, but that's it and it stops. But one of the things I do think you have to look at is you should look at the Charro Act and make sure that the people are protected on the things that I told you about when you have the expansion of the scope of the district. And we took on a RISE program that was an expansion of the scope of the district and the people never got a referendum and never got to vote for it. And now, we voted the other night to take in outside students that aren't in our district into the RISE program because we were told that it's going to be a moneymaker. And until I see a cost analysis and somebody shows me that it's going to be a moneymaker, I can't buy that. And we're getting ourselves down the road because of the school committee's actions and not adhering to the Charro Act, that we're getting in deeper and deeper. So, I'm, you can call it a warning, you can call it whatever you want, but you've got to look at that Charro Act and at least adhere to it. Because that's why the people put that there in the past, was to protect our people from these things happening. So...
It doesn't look like it's going to get opened up, though, Georgia.
It doesn't need to get opened up, but it needs to be enforced, for one thing. And if you're going to do something, I just said, it can't get opened up, you're going to have to go to court to fix it.
Who's going to pay for that?
You're going to pay for it one way or the other.
Like I said, I, my approach was to ask Tom, because he's the only one that didn't seem to be a minimal to, agreeable to, to opening this up. And, you know, I said, "We can put anything on the agenda that we all decide and send emails to Tom Gents because he seems to be the stumbling block."
I mean, you're who I'm trying to appeal to.
Well, you already...
You're my representative.
But you've already got me. I'm the easy one.
But I say that's...
It's Tom Gents, and if all three do not agree, they won't open it up, so.
I'd like to come.
Maybe we should go in another direction and we should take and form a school district, a real school district, and form a whole new type of structure. Because this one's going to take us in Hopkington in the wrong direction. And if the school committee keeps voting to do things and expand the scope of the district without you opposing it, and that's legal right there, it's in writing, then you're going to just get into deeper and deeper financial troubles, especially when you don't see a cost analysis that this is going to make you money. We're not in the business of making money. What we're supposed to do is provide for our students the best way we can with the means that we have, but not go out and try and provide for other towns' students and make money off of it. How are we going to make money off of that?
Well, the towns that send their kids to the school to RISE, they have to pay.
I understand that. But who's going to determine the pay? And who's going to determine which students we take? And how much those students are going to cost us to take? And just because you get some money, doesn't mean you make profit. It can cost you more money, all right?
But that's for the school, you guys, you're the school committee. I'm just trying to get some answers to some basic questions that we have outlined.
And I'm trying to warn you about a big problem.
Oh, I know, I know.
And you just said before that we could have a give and take and if there's anything that we needed, that we could ask you for. And I'm saying to you, for the people and the taxpayers of the district, I'm asking you. I'm an advocate for the people. I was elected by the people. And I'm telling you, the people have a problem and please help the people.
But this forum, George, is not for us to go to court or suggest going to court. I'm just trying to get some answers, that's all. Just find out how we can help each other. Going to court's not an answer, in my opinion. That's just my thoughts. If you want to go, want us to go to court, you know, that's like out of our league at this point. It's not really something that we need to be discussing tonight. George?
It seems to me, you know, that the school committee or the administration could get a legal counsel to just amend or override the Charro Act concerning numerous instances, some of which Georgia rose, raised. And the only thing that they seem adamant at enforcing is the funding structure, which is beneficial, really beneficial to one particular town. You know, why not address that issue? Why is that the only issue that they stand fast on?
I guess, according to Tom and Charleston, it would raise the taxes, you know.
Right. And I agree with them, you know, but that doesn't help us out.
No, doesn't. Yes, Barbara?
I was going to say, just bringing up the idea that you'd have to take them to court. The only thing that we could do on our end is look into, for Richmond and Hopkinton to look into, what would it cost to do that in order to take the maintenance, the utilities, the capital, and divide it third, third, third? Maybe not open the whole Charro Act, but look at the third, third, third. And perhaps we should at least see what is the cost? What would the legal cost be for that? And that is something the town could look at because we'd have to pay for it. And combine with Richmond and just say, "We want to open it for this one thing that we can sue for." And we may be able to get around Charleston that way. But, I mean, that's worth finding out what the costs are because the costs might be astronomical and we don't want to do...
Who wants to take on that stuff, Tom? Somebody want to do it? I mean, if somebody wants to take the bull by the horns and find out the cost, I'd be happy to look at it and put it on an agenda. We'll talk about it. But it's a monumental task and it's not something that we can easily, you know, come to a resolution on.
Well, I like you.
You're talking about long-term...
It's also not just the cost, but the likelihood of success.
Right, correct. No, no, absolutely. But it's one of those things that you, at least you can know the number and make a decision on it because then you have fact instead of generic concept.
That's fine. If someone wants to take the bull by the horns, you want to get together with the school committee members and come up with something, that's fine. You know, I'm just trying to get, you know, get through this list and answer all the questions and...
Well, first of all, the facts are, I don't think it was only Mr. Gents, but the whole Charleston council discussed that. They didn't want to. So, it wasn't just Mr. Gents. The council president can be overridden by the rest of their council. The other thing is, as far as the legal thing is, if somebody wants to discuss it, I'm certainly open to that. But I think that what we have to deal with is what reality is today. And I don't think the Charro Act Revision Committee should be started. Number one, Charleston is not interested. I certainly was open to it before. I think there was a concern expressed to me and made me go the way that I was against it, but I wouldn't support it anyways because Charleston's not interested. So, it's really, and apparently Charleston's not willing to restrict what would be discussed. Because in fact, there is a concern that there's a possibility, not that it would be practical now, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying what I've heard, okay, that would be conceivable, you could close, if that thing passed about changing district lines or sending students, they could possibly close a school. And it was always a question of where you would put the students. So, that's out there. I've heard that. I'm not saying it's practical or anything like that, but when you're on a town council, you hear this thing. But as far as that, I do think that, I can't remember what the big thing was I was concerned about with the Charro Act Revision Committee. But I do take exception, with all due respect to our town manager, I don't think it's the role of a town manager to be on the Charro Act Revision Commission, which Richmond Council mentioned, because that basically is a political committee.
I don't think it's going to go anywhere.
No, but I'm just saying that I just thought they were out of line on that. And it was, also, Joe Reddish publicly stated he doesn't believe it's fair for an equalized tax rate. But I think there are a lot of issues. I think it's something that we can revisit, but I don't see this Charro Act Revision Committee going anywhere too soon. So, I mean, it's a waste of time. I think we have issues that we can work on. I've certainly been a critic of Charro. I look forward to going to the State House to testify for the regional bonus. I might put a dig in about the support for vocational, technical education, or as they call it now, career or technical education, because I think that we've been short-changed on multiple fronts by the state of Rhode Island and Providence plantations.
Thanks, Scott. Number 10.
Could I, just following up on this, I think one avenue of approach that you could probably take is the reallocation of surpluses. I mean, they're, we're taxed at a different rate, a higher rate, but when they reallocate the surplus, there's a discrepancy there that's not accounted for. So, there's an issue right there that you might be able to use as sort of a wedge, a wedge issue to open this up.
Based on our percentage, you mean?
Yeah. So, when they're putting that money into the back into the district, it's unfair.
I'm probably rehashing something, but...
No, not you, George.
Not me. But a management study and triggering somebody that's professional to look into the things that the Charro Act could correct and how they could be done, might be the way to go. And it would cost you for a management study and maybe the three towns could supply that. But we had one done by, was it MGT?
Yes.
MGT a number of years ago. And, again, a management study might give you some of the answers to the things that we're not able to do ourselves. And maybe a professional told all three of us the right way to go and how we could save money, and maybe it would even save Charleston money, might be the way to go.
Yeah, go ahead, George.
The MGT study recommended addressing the issue of equalized taxation, and that's why it didn't go anywhere.
Teacher and auxiliary staff pension status. I'm not sure what the heck this is, but sounds like a, anybody want to, anybody? I don't know who put this on the list, but...
Almost we're behind.
Yeah, they're behind by a little.
Oh.
Your vendor...
Oh, I know. I put that on the list.
Underfunded.
Exactly. Okay, break it down to...
Sure.
I talked to Brian Stanley and he couldn't give me a figure or didn't want to give me a figure or whatever, but he wouldn't give me a figure about auxiliary staff pensions, pension amount. And I don't know whether they're funded to 50%, 20%, 75% or whatever. I know very proudly that this town, decimal wise, is nicely funded, pension, the police and guys down at the highway department and the staff here at the town hall. The pensions are nice, you know, they were right up there. I think the police were over 110%, something like that.
Yeah, so, no, I don't know. Do you remember how much they have?
They have to, you know, 13.
Yeah.
But those numbers should be available in the Rhode Island retirement board.
I would think so, maybe, George.
I posed that question and Brian Stanley got back to me. And here's basically, per Merz Actuarial Valuation Report, as of June 30th, 2012, the Merz unfunded actuarial liability associated with the Charro Regional District was $2,790,175. And the funded ratio was 83.8%, which I think is actually pretty good.
Pretty good.
Pretty good. Thanks, George.
Glad to hear that.
Yep. Next is number 11, the Teach Program. I had put that on as the last item because where I was at, some of the school committee meetings, it seemed like the union leadership wanted to get rid of that program. Now, it sounds like a good idea to me because they weren't willing to give up about $214,000 this year and next, which may help us to replace the money that was taken from the fund balance to shore up this budget cut that just happened. Does anybody in the school committee have any thoughts or feelings on whether this will gain any traction or not? It seems like it was well-received by both sides. Now, the last I heard was a meeting was supposed to be set up by the union attorneys, the school committee attorneys and the school committee. Has that been formalized yet?
I haven't heard anything about it.
Okay. You guys know anything about it?
I was told that we are going to have one on the 14th, which is, I believe...
The day of the vote.
The day of the vote. So, it's a little late, but that's what I was told.
Okay. Well, at least the meeting's taken place.
I was told that by Assistant Superintendent.
Is the meeting with the NEA lawyers or just with your own lawyers and the school board?
I don't know the details.
Because I thought they left it with, they were just going to have the meeting with you and your lawyer, not with the NEA personnel. And then maybe that would be a secondary meeting?
I think it was sort of a joint.
One of the problems that I had at the meeting was that I couldn't hear. And I kept saying that. So, I don't know all the details and I wasn't told by the Assistant Superintendent what and how it's being arranged. So, we are supposed to have a meeting. I asked because I thought it would be good if we could have the meeting before we had the vote and we know the results because it would help the vote one way or the other because we'd have some, you know, some closure on that item. But we're not having it until the 14th and I don't know... But we're not having it until the 14th, and I don't know, and I'm not privy to, and I didn't hear at the meeting how it was even left. I thought that the acoustics in that meeting were just absolutely terrible, because I couldn't hear some of the people from the audience, nor could I hear my school committee people.
You needed monitors.
Can you, Georgia, let us, let me know, I guess if the meeting does take place, and what the outcome is, I'd be very-
I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Can I just ask a question? Am I understanding that there was some question of whether, why the teach program didn't come up as a motion to be cut from the budget, because there was a legal, possible legal problem? Is that the understanding I got?
It's in the NEA contract.
And for some reason, the school committee wasn't legally represented at that meeting, for whatever reason? Knows Mr. Brian Stanley there?
It was, that was right. Unfortunately, our finance director, Brian Stanley, wasn't at the meeting, nor was our legal, you know, our legal counsel. And it was brought up, but that was pretty bad, because it's probably one of the most important meetings that we have.
Yeah.
And we should have had both of them there.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Well, anyway, we got through all the list. Thanks for everybody's input, patience, comments.
I'd like comments from them about the district's budget, the new budget. I'd like to see what they have to say.
Does anybody want to handle a budget question on the current proposed budget?
What are your opinions on the new budget?
Just say no. Are you moving to the next question?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
There seems to be some questions as to what level funding is. And to me, level funding is the same amount in your budget that you had last year, this year. Same amount in the budget. Our budget is up. Our budget has increased. And the only reason that we can say that it's level-funded is we took our surplus and some items from income and applied them. And when we did that, the cost to the towns is the same as it was last year. But the budget is up, and it's going to come back and kill us next year, because this is a one-time fix. And again, I tell you that when you use the surplus, Hopkins and taxpayers lose, because we put in more than how the surplus is applied back. We also lose, because what's going to happen to us is maintenance of effort takes place, because our budget is up, and so maintenance of effort is going to kick in next year. And that means that we will be required to pay more in our budget, because of maintenance of effort. We should have reduced the budget, because that's what would help the taxpayer. This is going to be an increase on the back of the taxpayer. This is not a decrease. It's not a level-funded budget.
How many committee members voted for the fund balance to be taken, that 390,000?
All of them but me.
Okay. You know, I agree with Georgia, I would have sought more permanent cuts, but the budget passed with those fund balance transfers, so, you know, I'm happy with the 627. It's going to reduce our taxes, but I understand the concern out there.
I don't know, and somebody should find this out legally, but I don't know. It says in the Charahoe Act, or the way that we fund the budget, that if the taxpayers turn it down a number of times, it goes back to last year's number.
Correct.
I hope it goes back to last year's number, the original budget. So if the people turn it down, we will get a level-funded budget. It will go back to what the people actually voted on originally.
The last budget that-
The last budget.
That was-
Not taking the surplus and using it to cut it. So, when you say, or think, that if the people do or don't vote this budget, that it doesn't make any difference, that we're as low as we can go now, I don't believe that's true.
I don't think it will matter, though. If you, if we go to level funding, the school department can take the money from wherever they want, including the surplus. So we would still lose the surplus. I mean, I understand voting it down, trying to get to level funding, but if you get to level funding, and we just say it's level-funded, the school department can take it from wherever they want, including the surplus.
Well, they're supposed to live within their budget.
Exactly, but I mean-
And only if there's an emergency do you get into the surplus.
But they, but they'll just take it. I mean, you know them, you've been there long enough, they're going to take that portion. So I think we lose that portion regardless, just regardless.
I don't think so, Barbara. I think, I think that it should go back to the level-funded number, and I hope that you're, I'm, I hope that I'm being understood. You know, what I'm saying is being understood. Maybe I'm not explaining it correctly, but-
All I, I imagine is that we will, if it gets turned down again and again, by July 1, we will revert to the town's share.
They can't keep doing it, though. There's only a number of times they can do it.
What do you mean?
They can't just keep doing it and doing it. There's only a certain number of times, and then it has to go back to last year's rate.
Right, it possibly could have two more votes, well, one more vote after this month.
July 1 is the-
July 1's the deadline.
I think this is the last vote they can have, this one. I don't think there'll be time enough.
They can still have one in June.
They can have another one.
But it's very, very tight. It's right near the end of June. It's a very tight, if they do a third, it's a very tight third. Yeah, it's like a day or two before the July 1.
Well, Lisa, you can comment on the timeframe, right? I mean, I was surprised at how many days it only took. You said four days for board of campuses?
No, board of watching.
I'm sorry, Barbara.
They spoke with them, they needed a four-day leave time, which I was surprised, because that was also, because they have the first hour.
Yeah, sure.
With the data, it's not particularly as known. The wording is static, I'm just saying, the data. It was amazing, because they have to configure the units and-
So we could have one more vote in June, mid-June, end of June, Georgia.
Could.
Good.
Could. I think that it's up to the taxpayers to tell the district, you know, what its wishes are. I think they came in loud and clear before, and they're not getting relief, not by using the surplus. They're not getting relief.
Thanks. Well, I guess as a council, any final thoughts, without going into a dissertation politically?
No, I think, first of all, I'm going to vote against the budget. I wanted to support it, because I have a reputation of always opposing Charahoe budgets, but I think there are a lot of questions. My only concern is for the town of Hopkins, and how that impacts our town budget, because we do have to put a number in for our education line item. And we have to have a budget in place by July 1, because that's when we had that shutdown years ago. So, at the moment, I'm voting against the budget. I think that they should have level-funded. The school committee has the luxury of controlling 75% of the taxes in the town of Hopkinton. I think, I think the original one was 75.58, or something like that. But anyways, and they can move them around at all. They have that great flexibility that we don't have. And we've got to consider, but how this is going to impact the town in the future. This town is operating on a budget that is $75 less this current fiscal year than the previous year. When we went into the last year, plus the same amount. The big term is, not only an impact on taxpayers, and people paying $6,000 a year is not unusual in Hopkins. And if people aren't fixing them, that's a lot of money. Plus, we also have to consider, when is it going to end, or is it, I mean, it's never going to end, because I think education is always going to be expensive, but what are we going to do about the continual impact on individual taxpayers, and the actual impact on the governing of this town, and doing things that this town should be doing? So unless I get a thunderbolt between now and Tuesday, I'm going to vote against it. Thank you.
You don't have to.
No, I'll make it very short, I won't go into it. Any municipality or any school district that goes into the surplus to cover costs without reducing costs, are just going to the well. And if you go to the well one year, you've got to go to the well the next year to cover those same costs. And eventually, the well runs dry. So you tap surplus, you guys say, sure, let's use the surplus to cover this budget, to cover these increases in costs. Next year, what are you going to do to cover it? And you know what? They're going to be right there, those costs are going to be right there, because you didn't cut them. So, go ahead, go to the surplus, see how many times you can do that, until your surplus runs out. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I'm still on the fence on whether to vote the budget up or down. And I'm leaning toward up, because I think ultimately what we're going to get is the level fund, no matter what we do on the May 14th, and then in June. What the school committee can do strategically is make it stay at level fund. And that's what we're going to end up with. And going through two more or another vote doesn't serve anyone any purpose. I am pleased very much that the school board, over the last several months, has cut 1.3 million out of the proposed original budget, school budget. 1.3 is a really nice cut. I know they worked at it, they did it in three different doses, but it was approximately 1.3 million. I am very pleased at our win, at being able to tell the school department they had to cut their budget. I think we won. I am so pleased, I am so proud of my citizens. But I think at this point, strategically, they can make it so it's a level fund, no matter what. And I think it's worth voting it up. With the codicil, that next year is the deep cuts. This was just the low-hanging fruit. This was the easy stuff, the surplus, the over-budgeting, conservative budgeting. Next year has to be the, the school board has to evaluate the effectiveness of all the programs and all the personnel. Whether it's the teach program, the career in tech, medical expenses, you have to evaluate over the course of this year and do deep cuts. Because next year, these citizens are going to ask, not for a surplus cut, but a deep cut, which means personnel, administrators, everyone should look at administrators, staff, programs, what works, what doesn't. If it doesn't work, cut it. If it needs to combine more kids in a class, combine kids in a class and take them from somewhere else. This is the year that the school board and the administration have been put on notice that says, you must evaluate the effectiveness of your programs and your personnel, because the public is going to demand it again. And they know they can win, they've already won, and they've won before, they'll do it again. And this time, this coming year, is, I don't want it just cut to the level fund, and you use the easy stuff. You're going to have to cut the hard stuff. And we definitely need that, because we have a dwindling student population. Dwindling. We have less and less students. We need to cut. I don't think it is necessarily useful to vote the budget down, because strategically, they can get it back to exactly what they've done now, which is effectively level funding. So I'm sort of on the, on the fence, more toward just pass it. We won, we won wonderfully, we won in a great way, and next year, do the same thing, again and again, for the deep cuts. And maybe they'll start with some deep cuts, and then go deeper. That's my concern.
Thanks. I think, you know, I'm in support of the recent cuts that you folks made, and they're enough, I consider. Now, I don't agree, obviously, I know the committee members and some of the council folks about taking money from surplus. That's not the way I would have approached it, but it has been voted on and passed, so I would have obviously opted for more permanent cuts. That being said, I think we should celebrate a small victory here. Like Barbara said, it's precedent-setting. We won. We actually, as a council, put a plan in place to have voter outreach, we bought new signs, we have the one-call-now system to get the vote out. We did a lot of things, and then we just happened to get lucky, I think, with Richmond, getting some folks on board and actually helping the cause. So, I think, I'm happy with the cuts. In all likelihood, it should reduce our taxes in town, and that's what I'm happy about. And I think, at the end of the day, if things don't get passed, we're going to revert to last year's figure, as far as the town's contribution with the debt service. So, I can't see having two more votes and having to go through all that to might end up at the same figure that we're at now. So, and cost the town roughly $3,000 for two more elections. So, that's my thoughts, and-
I respond, one final thing.
Quickly, Scott.
All I can say is, this is not a sporting event. It impacts not only the way we address our schools, but how we give breaks to people who have a hard time paying their taxes, as well as the operation of the town of Hopkins, which is really important. But it's not a sporting event. Thank you.
Not sure what, whose sporting event you're talking about.
No, but you said we should, you know, savor victory and all this other stuff.
We did. We had a victory, we won. I'm going to say it out there, absolutely. I am so proud of everybody for how they voted, the fact that they got out and vote. This was-
It was a concerted effort.
Absolutely. We worked our tushes off for this, and I am very proud of you, and it worked.
And I believe you're happy that-
It was a two-to-one vote, which is highly unusual.
Three-to-one.
I mean, okay, overwhelming vote, even in Richmond, which astounded me, but-
So that's a victory in my book, but I don't know what book you-
And it takes a lot to turn those people around to the other side.
Thank you. Last public forum. No. I'm going to, make a motion to adjourn, Scott?
I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to move to a, before I do, I'll explain what I'm doing. I'm going to move to adjourn in memory of Ruth Corrigan, whose brother is a member of our Board of Campuses, former council president, and also in honor of our employees and the town residents to our mothers, because of upcoming Mother's Day. So, Mr. President, I make a motion, we adjourn in the memory of the late Ruth Corrigan, and in honor of our employees and our town residents to our mothers, for Mother's Day.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night.